Okay, you're on. Okay, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. We'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
If you'll all rise, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Franklin, and if you remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Lee Anne Shaw, United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regard of all who worship it, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great in us.
Let us be in a spirit of prayer. Holy and gracious one, gather us in this evening for the purpose that is set before us. We give thanks for each person who has come to be here tonight, whether they are in this room or watching on cable. We give thanks for each person and their call to civic participation. Open each mind and heart to the highest good for our community of Vista. Guide us not to be self-centered, but to self-sacrifice for the concerns of all. Make us especially mindful of those who are vulnerable in our community. And bless the agenda which has been set out for those assembled tonight. For the work of calendaring, land and resource management, taxation and budgeting, art and cultural displays, bless each line item, question, and vote with the dignity that it deserves, and offer us all a vision which carries us forward to 2030. And lastly gracious one, bring your certain protection to this place. Scatter holy light which casts out every dark shadow here, and keep each person here safe in body, mind, and spirit. With the spirit of compassion and gratitude, I lift these prayerful thoughts in peace. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Shaw. And according to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of covering simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. We have approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you Mayor, there are no changes this evening.
And there were no, there was no closed session that was scheduled today. So the next thing is, is anybody here from the San Diego County Fair? Is there a person here? We're supposed to have a presentation from this end, but I don't see anyone, so maybe they'll come in later and they can have that at a different time. So then that takes us to our consent calendar, items C1 through C6. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So I don't have any, anything removed from the audience, anything removed here? If not, I would recommend a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion in a second. Okay, please cast your votes. Councilmember Rigby, did you want to say something? That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our discussion items. And our items scheduled for discussion generally require a detailed explanation by staff or an agency member that has requested the item. So tonight, we have two discussion items. The first one is the Paseo Santa Fe Gateway Arch, and actually, I asked to have this item put on the agenda. And the reason is because we've gotten lots of emails and things requesting, did somebody say something? That was a funny noise, okay. Anyway, lots of people, it was requested that there be a change to it of some sort. But, and just so you know, I was really surprised, I've been probably on the council the longest, and for many years, I mean even before I was on the council, we were looking at South Santa Fe, to redevelop South Santa Fe, and to make it, I mean, a nicer place for our city, because there is crime and blight, yeah, and blight, and prostitutes, and all sorts of thing down there. And so we wanted to make it a nicer place, and to give it a better identity, to make it, you know, a better place for Vista. So that, that, back even before I was on the council many years ago, was the goal. And it's been the goal of all of our councils going along, and we had a lot of workshops and different things, and I'll have, John Meyer actually can explain maybe the history to you of all of that. But I, and then we'll talk about, if you don't do that, then we'll talk about it a little more after that.
Good evening Mayor and members of the city council. The roots of the revitalization effort go back to the adoption of the original downtown Vista specific plan in the early 90s. Over the next decade, there was constant discussion on how to improve South Santa Fe Avenue. In November of 2003, a consultant was hired to prepare a planning and economic study of South Santa Fe Corridor. In January 2004, this offered, this effort was kicked off with what was known as Renaissance Week, a comprehensive week-long effort to receive stakeholder and public input. Feedback and additional input were received at a follow-up workshop in May, and a final workshop was held in October of 2007 where the draft vision was presented. It's important to point out that the marketing materials from this period of time referred to the project as the South Santa Fe slash Mercantile Corridor. The draft vision was then presented to the city council on May 24, 2005, and the council provided policy direction on several elements of the draft vision. A formal revitalization strategy was then presented to the city council on November 27, 2007, and it was at this time the project was rebranded South Santa Fe, excuse me, rebranded Paseo Santa Fe. It should be also, it should also be noted that a wayfinding program was included in the 2005 draft vision, and at its biannual strategic goal-setting workshop in March of 2007, the city council directed staff to bring back a formal wayfinding program. That program was presented to the city council on August 26, 2008, and this included the logo for Paseo Santa Fe, which is on the screen. 2008 led us into the Great Recession, followed by the dissolution of redevelopment in 2011 and 2012. Despite this, the council provided direction to proceed with the construction of the detention basin along South Santa Fe, and to proceed with the final design of the streetscape improvements. A final streetscape master plan was presented to the city council on March 13, 2013. Construction drawings and the bid packets were then completed, and construction began in May of 2014. The design of the Gateway Arch occurred after the March 2013 meeting, but incorporated the material and design elements found in the approved master plan, and included the Paseo Santa Fe moniker. A depiction of the Gateway Arch was included in the December 2015 Our Vista Residential Newsletter. This has a circulation of about 20, 30, this has a circulation of around 37,000, and is delivered to all residences and businesses in the city of Vista. The arch was also featured in the city's outreach booth during community events over the last two years, and several newspaper articles over the same period included references to the arch, and specifically, the Paseo Santa Fe name. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Mayor, if I could, just Mr. Meyer provided an overview of the last 20-plus years, but I know the city council didn't request this, but as a result of the attention that it's been getting, basically on social media and in the press, Mr. Meyer did prepare a couple of mock-ups of what the sign could be like if it said Vista on it, some potential mock-ups, I should say. And so I wanted to make you all aware of that, that if you want to view those during this item this evening, we'd be happy to display those and walk you through them.
I would like to see them, and I also want to say, I was, I didn't have an opinion, I just thought, I always thought that it was gonna be Paseo Santa Fe, that was identifying that corridor, and the redevelopment of that corridor, and we'd done, you know, phase one, which is beautiful, and I was so proud of it, and how nice it looked, and then to have all the negative comments that nobody, almost appreciated all the nice things that we did, and it's, you know, it's all been kind of like a lot of negative things about the arch, and that's been the subject, rather than the beautiful veterans park that we have, and I don't know if you've walked around in there, but it's beautiful, and the area is beautiful, and that's phase one, and we're working on phase two now, which will move that on down to the next, I think it's down to Guajomi Street, and then there'll be phase three, and in the beginning, they're planned, there were two arches planned, one at this end, and one actually at the other end. So it was the Paseo Santa Fe Corridor, and it's kind of like, you know, like Cedros, the sign for Cedros, or the gas lamp in San Diego, it doesn't say, you know, San Diego, it just says Gaslamp District, and it was kind of like, so, excuse me, anyway, so that's, I just wanted to give you a little, little history about that. So I'd like to see, I'd like to, I don't have a problem with putting Vista on the sign, I never have, I, you know, but, so I'd like to see what you've done, if we could do that now?
If that's what you want, sure.
No? Oh, Councilmember Campbell?
Just wanted to make a follow-up comment, Mayor, that I agree with what you're saying completely. You know, this has been a long process, this is not something that just happened six months ago, and we came up with the name and drew it out of a hat. This has been a long process that the public has had input on over many years. As you know, I worked with one of the former council members here, and this has been a process that I've been aware of, you know, outside of being on the council for many years. And I think that it's important to keep in mind that this is a special district that we're branding and designating as Paseo Santa Fe within the city. It's very similar to other areas in the city of San Diego, like Hillcrest and North Park, that those signs don't say City of San Diego on it, but I don't have an issue putting City of San Diego on the sign, but it's important to note that this is not a Gateway Arch that's designating the entryway to the city, or designated this as City of Vista, this is branding part of our downtown as Paseo Santa Fe. It's the first of three phases, it's a major undertaking for the city, to improve a blighted area of town that was an area that people didn't want to go to. You didn't feel safe walking through there at night. You didn't want to go shopping in that area. Now, we're seeing a revitalization of downtown, which has been the goal of many councils over the past 20-plus years, and so it's very exciting to see that progress occurring, and I think it's a very positive overall outcome. And I'm interested in seeing what potential minor modifications we could make to the sign to address some of the concerns.
We can put those up right now if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to see them. Would, okay, everybody?
And Mr. Meyer can walk you through both these illustrations.
Thank you. So the first iteration is to remove the hummingbird and flower, and replace it with Vista California. This is just an early concept, this is probably the simplest approach to adding Vista to the sign. And then the second version is to maintain the hummingbird and the flower, and to add Vista underneath.
And again, these are concepts, the first slide that was shown that said Vista California is representative of the entryway signs that we have in Vista, in terms of the Vista California look.
So do I have any other comments here? Let me take the speakers. Okay.
I just want to make one brief comment that the city manager brought up, which is, we do have several monument signs at the entry points to the city that say Vista California currently, that are at every major entry point to the city.
And then I had one person ask, they thought it was named after the, after the building there, the new project there, that the street was, but the project was named after the Paseo Santa Fe Corridor, so that, you know, was like kind of a reverse of what they had thought, so. Okay, so I will start and take our speakers, we have several speakers, so if you'd like to give your name and address, and three minutes, please, because there's a lot of speakers tonight. So I will start with Cliff Kaiser.
Thank you Mayor, Council. My name is Cliff Kaiser, 1620, Cuyahoga, in Vista. I'm not in favor or against changing the sign, I think what you have facilitated in redeveloping that area is spectacular, I applaud you for that, I love the Gateway Arch, it's beautiful. It would be nice to have Vista up there, but I'm not passionate about it either way. My comments are more about the process that the city used to try to engage the community. And I know some of those processes, whether it be the magazine, or notices mailed out, or other means, but obviously, it was not very effective. Within a few hours, if not the next day, after the sign went up, petitions were raised, and here we are, two or three weeks later, and there's probably nearly 3,000 signers on a petition, and other social media saying that they're concerned about what that sign says. So my point is not whether the sign is good or bad, my point is the city needs to reevaluate how it engages the community when there's some significant events going up, whether it be a new apartment complex, a new road, a new sign, or something like that. Because what's being used right now, this is a good example of, doesn't seem to be very effective. Just yesterday, I was at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, where there was a proposal presented to redesign Bub Williamson Park over in West Vista. They're gonna, proposing to remove the softball field and put in a soccer field there, when in fact, Vista Girls Softball, which manages 350 girls across the spring season, wasn't even aware that they were removing, removing the softball field. So another example of where the stakeholders and the community wasn't engaged when there's significant events happening in the community. And you know all the stuff that's out there that need to be reviewed, whether it be Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, and all those, Instagram, and all those other technologies that we don't even know about yet. City needs to stay engaged with those, so that they can reach out to their constituents. And I'd like to read, I'm gonna take a different hat, and read some comments from David Nilson, a respected civil engineer, retired, longtime Vista resident. And his comments, and I'm not for or against him, but I thought I would share them. "Paseo Santa Fe is a discreet element in downtown Vista, a portion of an urban land between Civic Center and Main Street. It is not Vista, but is a part of Vista, and rightly has its own identity. It is not downtown, but it is a part of downtown. Vista's many street signs do not have Vista's name on it. I am David. I do not need a sign telling everyone that my hand, which is attached to me, is part of David. This is David's hand." There are no signs that Little Italy's, is Sandy, Little Italy is San Diego, everyone knows that. And he goes on with that same concept. So obviously, his position is that it's identifying that district, and we don't need to necessarily, in his opinion, say Vista, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Tom Fleming, followed by Mary Gann.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just real quickly, I want to say that, well, my name's Tom Fleming, I lived at, I live at 809 Grapevine in Vista, and I've lived there since 1975. I went to work at the shoe repair shop downtown in 1984, and so I was going to work there when Santa Fe was what was just described, it was the area that you did not go to, there was drugs, prostitution, there was homeless laying in the street, it was a mess. And we started there, talking about it. I was a member of the VVBA Board of Directors for a number of years, president from '05 to '09, and I was part of a lot of public discussion, where they had forums, we had meetings and everything else. And as Cliff was mentioned, maybe the, getting the word out is where the problem, where there was a lack of communication there. I personally like the sign, I like the idea that there is different groups, like where the downtown is, is a separate, from the village is separate from Paseo Santa Fe. However, I do think the sign should be modified slightly. I like the second sign you had up there, and I would like to correct the flower, do a little painting on the flower there too, from what I've read, I won't comment on that, but we all know what it says. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that's where I stand on it. The, if there is going to be another arch, I suggest that the arch, in the future, you might look at an arch over Civic Center Drive, just into Vista, from the railroad tax, there was, that would say Vista. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Gann, followed by Catherine Kerner.
Hello, my name is Mary Gann, and I live on Bandini Place in Vista. I have lived in Vista since 1962, so this is my home. And when I saw that, it made me very upset. And I believe that our downtown is our downtown, and we do everything down there, all our events, and we're down there, we want to see it say Vista. That sign, it's beautiful, but I'd like to see it farther away, or farther down to the entrance at the other end, because when I'm downtown, going to the avocado festival, or whatever, we want it to say Vista. That is the heart of our downtown, it always has been, and you have made the city beautiful. I have no problem with the improvements, everything you've done is gorgeous, I have a problem with that, though. And I don't want it to say Paseo Santa Fe with Vista small at the top. And then, I just have some questions here that I want to read off really quick. Number one, I'd like to know exactly how much did the sign, including the pillars, cost? Number two, exactly where did the funds come from? Number three, exactly how many public forms were distributed? Discussion groups, votes were held only in the name and design of the sign? Can we get the minutes from those meetings about that sign? Number four, who approved the final design concept, and why was Vista removed when it was on the early drawings? Five, had the funds for the second sign planned at the Civic Center and been raised? And if yes, was the money, was the money raised? And thank you for your help, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might add, those questions were listed on a Public Records Act request that the city received yesterday, so we will be responding formally to those.
Okay. Catherine Kerner, followed by Teresa Collins.
Good evening Mayor, city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on the matter of the new Gateway Arch, Paseo Santa Fe. My name is Catherine Kerner, my family moved Vista in 1969. Like many people who grew up in a small town, I got out the moment I could. I moved to LA, I started my family and began to form my idea of what home was. In 1994, I moved back to Vista, and in 1998, I bought my family home. I was just 29 years of age, so at a pretty young age, I could tell a good thing when I saw it. There is a soul here in Vista, I knew this is where I wanted to spend my life. For many years, I had to dine and shop on the coast, Vista unfortunately had not grown at the same pace I had. I needed some culture, some good dining experiences, and better shopping. I pitched the idea of Vista whenever I could. I would like to think I had something to do with my dear friends Roddy and Aaron purchasing and renovating our old Santa, our old Santa Barbara Bank building, to create the wonderful flying pig Vista. With a lot of hard work by a lot of people, you included, Vista is finally coming into her own. I want to be clear here that my issue is not with the distinct district Paseo Santa Fe, it's hard for me to say it. I think, I think the improvements are wonderful. I will tell you, though, I have yet to meet a single person out in our community who has called it that, or even knew that that, that it had a name. I understand the concept of wanting to rebrand a blighted area, what I do not understand is why anyone thought this distinct district needed $180,000 Gateway Arch. And further, that you have another one planned at the other end of Civic Center for the same amount of money is baffling to me. A sign is a powerful symbol of a town's identity. This is what you seem to have missed here with this arc. I have been out and about, and trying to, you know, talk to the people of Vista, to find somebody who actually likes it. I haven't found anybody that isn't connected somehow with the City of Vista, City Council, or the planning project, who really likes it, like no one. That's a big failure on the part of the city. I have people connected with this project saying things like, "Well, you should have said something 10 years ago when it was being talked about." And perhaps they're right, but like most people here in Vista, I have to work for a living. I trust the people I elect to make good decisions on behalf of myself, and my family, and my friends, and fellow residents in Vista. And to correct you, the sign in the gas lamp says Historic San Diego on it, the Little Italy sign says San Diego on it, so that's incorrect, and it's said over and over again. People ask me what I would like the sign to say, and it's not an easy answer, because it does in fact, mark the entrance to a distinct district, as we've heard over and over again. So amending the sign to say welcome to Vista, or Historic Vista, or just Vista, really makes no sense, does it?
I need you to wrap up.
So what I want to say is this, I'd like to have the whole sign taken down, I'd like it to be just past Main Street, over South Santa Fe, to include, and sew together our three fantastic distinct districts. But since that's not going to happen, please adopt one of the ideas that many of us have had to make a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teresa Collins, followed by Amanda Ditters.
Good evening Mayor Ritter, Deputy Mayor Rigby, city council, and my fellow residents. I think you probably all know me, I'm Terri Collins, and I'm the person who actually started the Paseo Santa Fe Vista Facebook page, because the city of Vista forgot to do it. I'm in marketing, and so the minute I saw the sign, my marketing gear kicked in. I'm a 15-year resident of Vista, and a native San Diegan, both my husband and I are, and we're very proud of it. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of the over 2,900 people who signed the petition, and right now, it's up to 2925, and growing every minute. I will not stop until I get up to the amount needed to get it on the petition, if we don't have the situation resolved here tonight. That's how determined and proud I am of the city. I'm also here on behalf of the 300 people who have already liked my Paseo Santa Fe Vista Facebook page, and the many, many people who I've had the pleasure to meet while walking downtown the last few weeks, and asking them just the simple question, "How do you like the sign?" I asked them with a positive attitude, because I didn't want to influence the way they reacted. When the city broke ground on the project, I was excited for the revitalization of the area, who wouldn't be? A walkable area, connecting both residents and visitors to our many restaurants and breweries, especially the people that can now get here on the train, they don't even have to drive home. And when they come into the area, the train's gonna say, "Welcome to Vista, next stop Vista." They look out the window and they see Paseo Santa Fe, what kind of branding is that? When I saw the sign wrapped in plastic, I was so excited, "Oh my God, we're gonna get a Vista sign, just like all my other communities," because I'm a resident, I'm from San Diego, so I go everywhere here, ask my friends, and I've seen all the other signs. Since most of us were at work that day, we couldn't attend the ceremony. And upon seeing the video, I was shocked. That second, I immediately went onto the web, because I'm a researcher too, and I started looking around for as much information as I could find. How did this happen? Who would have picked that design? Who doesn't know what human feces looks like? And that's the problem, everyone laughs, I'm proud of the city, I want people to think, "Wow, that's amazing." I don't want people to laugh at my city's sign. I'm very nervous, you can see. With the lack of information that I could find on the city's website, especially the information that we were shown here today, because it's hidden somewhere very deep, I began to dig further on all the posts, all of your posts on Facebook. I'm gonna say the rest of it very fast. In November of 2015, a picture of the development appeared in the Our Vista Mailer, but there was no information about the sign.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. That same month, the city responded to a request for information. Page 46 of that request for information showed the sign with the word Vista on top. Page 64, on page 74, the word Vista was gone, and a shell design appeared in its place. I will, one, one more sentence.
One more sentence.
But on the next document that we received on May, I mean on December 15, the rendering of the sign did not contain the shell design, but that rendering did not show the context of the buildings, it did not show us how grand the sign was. The area is beautiful, but it did not show us what we were getting for $360,000.
Stop.
Excuse me.
Stop.
Please, please go on and read all the people who signed the sign.
Amanda Daniels, followed by John Herrera. Amanda Daniels, was that Amanda Daniels? No. Oh, okay, sorry.
Good evening. My grandparents decided to move here in 1962, or no, I'm sorry, 1964. They moved from LA. They wanted a better place for their daughter to grow up, because they wanted a more community feel. Through those years, my grandparents and my parents have watched Vista go up and down, moved, came back, because they knew that they had something good. They loved the community here, and they loved everybody. They loved their neighbors. They loved the fact that they could walk next door and borrow a cup of sugar without someone looking at them like they were crazy. Um, since then, I've moved, I've come back, and now I live in that same house that my grandma built. I have a huge sense of pride when I think about where I live. I work in Claremont. It's a 70-mile commute every single day, but I'm not moving. So, when I saw the sign, I was kind of disappointed, because I'm so proud of Vista that I thought that everybody else should be, too. And I felt that while Paseo Santa Fe is a great idea, the, I can appreciate all the improvements done working in a civil engineering firm. I know how much work goes into that. And I know the building, and I know the planning, and I know the implementing, and I know how hard it is. The fact that you turn that district into something beautiful is nothing short of amazing. However, why can't we just be proud that it's in Vista? Why can't we be proud of what we've done to bring the community together? Everybody wants to go to downtown Vista now. Everybody wants to go to Flying Pig. Everybody wants to go to the New Belching Beaver. You know, there's, there's good places down there. Think about how long Pepper Tree Frosty has been sitting there. And it has a line every single day. That's something to be amazingly and incredibly proud of. So why not switch it around and just have Vista big on the sign and have Paseo Santa Fe on the bottom or on the top? Because I just feel like we should be able to include Paseo Santa Fe, because it is a good district, but we should be more proud of where we put that district. Thank you.
Thank you. John Herrera, followed by Janine Lavoy.
Members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm delighted to hear all this civic pride being expressed. I'm afraid that I was one of the persons probably responsible for contributing to what, uh, Paseo Santa Fe has now. And that's because in 1968, I relocated here from San Diego, and Mr. Dell Williams, who was conducting the Lead Vista classes, I think Cliff Kaiser is a graduate also of Lead Vista. Anybody else here from Lead Vista? You know what we did then. You, Lead Vista, okay. You know what we did back there in 1968. I was a member of the Junior Chamber of Commerce, and we purposely held our meetings where Ernie's statue is now located, because we wanted to get some visibility there and bring some light into that area, because this has been pointed out by Mr. Meyer, it's quite blighted and not a very pleasant place, and we wanted to change that. And as you know, the redevelopment monies were a little difficult to obtain. It took some 20, 30, 40 years to actually get that money to actually to these things. But as a member of Lead Vista, what we did is we went to a research planning project to look into what it would take to change what was then South Santa Fe. And we looked at the, what would the capital intensive or the labor intensive, uh, costs be in, involved? And what is it going to take to do the continuing changes that are going to occur between 1968 to present? And I'm glad to see that we have a lot of community members who are willing to take out their checkbooks and to fund all of these changes that are, wish to occur. Because we have to ask ourselves indeed, where are these funds going to come from? I mean, the redevelopment funds have, uh, have dried up, and the city is not really, uh, rolling in dough. And I know that our property taxes keep going up, because justly so, we have to contribute to what we're doing. But my point is, uh, do we have to make any changes to that sign? Is there something that we can do better? And I think that it's wonderful that we have this opportunity, because when we were doing this over, since 1968, there were multiple, uh, public meetings that were held for input. As a matter of fact, I'm just delighted to see the turnarounds that were incorporated. That was one of my suggestions that I brought down from, from Seattle. It was not an original idea, but we were looking at the traffic flow. What's it going to take to get that traffic flowing and not congested? And that was one of the suggestions that I'm really delighted that was incorporated. So that's one of the things that we can continue to do here. We can continue to do all our input, our research, and then out of all of this, out of all this, uh, input, we can look at what is realistic, what can we actually do, and what can we afford, and where is that funding going to come from? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jeanie, is it Jeanie Lavoy? Are you okay? Followed by Brenda DeAngelis.
It's a pleasure to meet you. Mayor Ritter and Councilmen, let me put my glasses on. My name is Jeanie Lavoy. I've been a resident of Vista since 1975. I originally visited Vista in 1971. And when I came here, Jazzercise and Shell Hoops were downtown Vista. Vista was very small. There were about only 35,000 people. And growth came, which was a good thing in the measure of economy. When I graduated from Vista, I moved to South Santa Fe and lived in the barrio. That's all I could afford at the time. I had to wear a hoodie to go to Stardust Theater to hide my gender and blonde hair for safety measures. And so, yes, it was a barrio, and I lived that life. I decided to move out of Vista for a short period and graduated from Cal State Long Beach. While I was attending Cal State Long Beach, I graduated and attended, um, I went to Belmont Shore. If any of you are familiar with Belmont Shore and Long Beach, it went through a renaissance. And what I've learned is through any city, through its growth, goes through a redevelopment and a renaissance phase, when it, um, goes into that plummet. And I know change can be difficult. I saw the sign just the other night. I came around the corner of Sonics and was just appalled at first, because I didn't, I've, I worked two jobs. I teach at San Marcos Unified, and I also worked for a very big corporation. And I was appalled that I didn't know about this. As stated earlier by one of the residents, I was not informed. But on the other hand, I was in awe by the obelisks. I saw it say Paseo Santa Fe, and I thought, how wonderful to honor our heritage, our California Mexican heritage, to bind two communities, in a sense, the old and the new together. And as you stated earlier, um, it's not a gateway. It is a bridge. It is a bridge to help with our economy. I know that the Crecorian Center in that area, and now it's called the Cineplex, was in a deficit, and there were several businesses that had closed. And due to this signage, I think it, as the new beginnings, which has been in a long projection of development, is a wonderful binding unit. And so I think this is not our gateway, northeast, south, and west. Vista is a large community, extending great borders. I've worked for several school districts, Carlsbad, Oceanside, and San Marcos. On, on the borders, we do have signage. And I think it would be admirable to keep and put Vista at the top, just as we have our American flag in the center and always above.
Thank you. I need you to wrap up. And the reason I was laughing at this, your description of the, of the Stardust Theater?
It was the Stardust Theater.
My kids used to go there, and they called it the Sticky Floor Theater.
It was. It was sticky floor. You're exactly right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Brenda DeAngelis, followed by J.C. Nguyen.
Thank you, councilpeople, for letting me be here today and speak. Um, I just wanted to let you know, I moved here when I was two. My parents had a business actually on Mercantile, which is the street right behind Santa Fe, for over 30 years. They actually owned the building and rented it out to other people at one time, and then sold and moved to a larger facility for their business, because it expanded so much. So I've been, I've been here since I was two. I'm not going to say how old I am in public. However, I do, um, no, I went to all the schools here in Vista, and I really have a lot of pride in Vista. In fact, I'm a real estate agent, and I bring people to Vista all the time. I ask my buyers to consider Vista because of the great value you get for your money and the beauty that we have in having a rural community that still has, um, the ability to have animals here that some places don't let us have and things like that, and in larger lots. Um, however, I know that our community is not the Gaslamp Quarter. We're not. I, I don't want that for my own children. I don't want to have downtown Gaslamp Quarter. I want downtown Vista, which is rural. That's what our town is. And I do love the redevelopment. I appreciate all the things that have been done, including this building. It's gorgeous. Um, I mean, from the flooring to the ceilings. It's, it's beautiful, and I love it, and I bring my clients through here all the time. What I don't appreciate is the lack of knowing that the Paseo Santa Fe sign was going to be coming. In fact, um, I know it was 10 years ago, and in 10 years ago, I was living in Marietta, and then I moved when I was ready to move back here and buy in Vista, and I could afford it. I did. So, um, I wasn't able to be at those meetings about Paseo Santa Fe, and I know that's not necessarily your fault. But because my family are still all planted here, all my sisters, both of my sisters have homes here, my parents have homes here, Vista's really important to me. And, um, so it was really a shock to me. And I feel like that it's a shock to the council is a little strange, because it makes me think maybe we all weren't notified and you guys aren't in touch with what we all want, which is the citizens here. And I also just wanted to clarify, to me, Vista has gone a lot of, gone through a lot of different things. We've had a strawberry festival. I didn't know we were a strawberry place. That's great. I love it. Then we've been an avocado grove. Okay, so we've got avocados. I don't know where the hummingbird and lilac comes from. However, I appreciate that. But a lilac, let's be honest, a lilac is phallic. If we put it up there, we couldn't. What we have right now is actually, looks like a turd. Let's be real. And, um, to me, I would like to see something that represents what we're doing a festival for, a strawberry. That would be great. A hummingbird, I don't know where it comes from. And what I really would love to see, too, is just Vista, because that's where I grew up, and that's what I love. So thank you.
Okay. J.C. Nguyen, followed by Bruce Schiff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I came last meeting to address this, and nobody showed up. But I'm glad to be here tonight, and I'd just like to say that it breaks my heart that people are so upset about this topic, and that with all the hard work that we have to come to this. Uh, people must realize that it's not government's job to come hold their hands and tell them when every little decision is being made. It's the citizens' job to be informed what their government is doing and telling, you know, informing their government what their decisions are before they're being made. Uh, I've done a lot of years in public service. Mine's mostly, I mean, all of it's volunteer, 35-plus years. And I've come to realize, leading pop corners and little leagues and, you know, Easter egg hunts and follow a lot of that, uh, there's a 2% factor in life. You know, 2% of the people do all the work. 2% of the people do most of the complaining. And it's funny that I did some calculations today, and as of 3:04, 3:12 PM today, the Vista Views, uh, website had 2,910 people in favor or supporting their little cause, which I did the calculation with my computer, and it came to 2.86%. Just, just a number to throw out there. Uh, we need to understand the sign's purpose. The sign's purpose is not to designate "Welcome to Vista." Uh, I call on all the people, uh, in the city of Vista to get on the committees, to come out and, uh, address the Lions Clubs and the Elks Clubs and the Optimist Clubs and all the clubs, and form committees and get some fundraising going, so we can get a Welcome to Vista arch over here on Vista Village, coming off the freeway and on Civic Center Drive, like the gentleman said, just the side of the train tracks coming off the, then, every exit coming toward Vista, it says Vista, Vista. So you know when you get off the freeway in Vista, you're going to be in Vista. Uh, groups together for the Vista sign would be a good thing. So if you want to start now, we could probably have one by the next ribbon cutting at the end of Paseo Santa Fe. Uh, the process was transparent. I know I was there. I've lived here my whole life. Nobody loves Vista more than me, and I don't think I love it more than anybody else. Most people here are passionate. We got a passion for Vista. We love Vista. We wouldn't be here if we didn't love Vista. So no one loves Vista more than, than any other person. So thank you for all the hard work you're doing. You guys are doing a great job. Okay, keep your heads up. Uh, remember, my philosophy of the 2% factor, it's inevitable wherever you go. And, uh, hopefully, together with the 2% and the 98%, we can come together, get a Welcome to Vista, sign up on both entries to Vista, and be happy. Thank you. God bless you.
J.C. Bruce Schiff.
Mayor, councilmembers, um, I think you guys have done a great job. I love the Santa Fe District. I love the sign. I don't see poop, and I don't, I don't get that at all. I really like his idea about putting the two Come to Vista signs off of Civic Center Drive and Vista Village Drive. I think that would make everybody happy. And instead of spending the money to change this sign, maybe you can put the money towards those new signs. But you guys have done a great job. Like he said, there's, not, not everybody's going to be happy. I've known about Paseo Santa Fe for at least 10 years, and all I do is read the local papers. It's, it's been in there a bunch of times. Nobody's tried to hide that. And I think it, it denotes what's gone on. It's, it's the new Paseo Santa Fe. It's not, I mean, people coming off the freeway aren't going to see this. You know, just the local people, and it's a district that's been horribly blighted. And if we can get some signs like they have in Encinitas and wherever, off the freeway where everyone will see it, it'll be much better. But you guys have done a great job, so thanks.
Thank you. That's the last of our speakers, and so I see I have, um, Councilman, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to everybody who came out here tonight to speak your mind and your opinion on this. I appreciate you taking the time to come out and talk to us. I, I wanted to say that, um, we had an occasion, and I don't honestly recall what the occasion was last year, perhaps, that we, the sign, topic of the sign came up. And I mentioned last year that I thought it should say the city of Vista on it somewhere. So that did come up quite some time ago. Um, but as was mentioned, there weren't any people in the room to hear that conversation that we had at the time. And it wasn't voting on the sign. It was another topic that just came up. But I have to say, the comments were made about the city not being engaged with the community and the community not knowing. Long before I was ever involved with the city council or as a commissioner, I had heard about Paseo Santa Fe and the redevelopment many, many years ago, whether it was in conversation at the local library, or at church, or community meetings. It is something that has been on the books. It has been out there for a long time for the community to look at. And we do have quite an active social media here in Vista. We have Facebook. We've got Twitter. We have a couple of different things going on. We also have an email that goes out to everybody who signs up for the email. I believe it's on a weekly basis. And all of this information is put out there, as well as printed in the newspaper, and, and more than just one paper around. So I'm not sure exactly how else we can get more information out to every single citizen in the city, and I'm not sure that that's even possible. Um, if there, if there were more ways that we could do it, I'm sure we would. And if you have specific ideas, please let us know what else more we can do than we already are doing. And I, I do have to say that there are other signs. People keep bringing up San Diego, the Gaslamp Quarter, it does say San Diego. Little Italy says San Diego. Barrio Logan, Logan Heights, North Park, they do not say San Diego. So you have as many examples of cities that are included on the names of their neighborhood signs as you do of signs that don't have it. So to me, that's neither here nor there, what other cities are doing. It's, it's what we are doing here. And we have done a great- And we have done a great job in that neighborhood throughout, Paseo, Santa Fe, that avenue, that corridor. I remember twenty years ago, again, it wasn't someplace you wanted to go to or stop. There wasn't a lot going on down there that wasn't a good element. We've done a great job as a city, coming together and rebuilding and rebranding that neighborhood, so much so that I've had people complain to me that we spent money on such a beautiful part of town, why don't we spend money rebuilding something else? So that tells me we've done a really good job there. And this sign, as it has been mentioned, is not a gateway into Vista, it's a sign introducing and branding this particular neighborhood and this community. And I am very proud of what we've done there and I'm very proud of the sign, although, as I mentioned, I had said I thought it should say Vista on there somewhere. We have the Shadow Ridge sign that says underneath it, "Community of Vista." I don't have a problem with that. I think that would be consistent if we had it on there somewhere. But I don't mind this sign. I like the sign that we have. And I like the hummingbird and the lilac, and somebody asked where that comes from. Anna's hummingbird and the California lilac are the official bird and flower of the city of Vista. And it adds to the charm, the character and the history of our city to include that on the sign. And when I look at the bird and the lilac, I see a bird and a lilac. I didn't see anything else. And I'm a little disappointed and saddened that other people are really focused on something so negative on that. And I think I like the sign. If we add to it, I would like to just have Vista underneath it. I think not this, as you're showing now, but the second rendition of it would be what I would be in favor of. But I think all in all, the city of Vista is to be commended and staff is to be commended for the work that we've done in this area. And I don't want the sign controversy to take away from the pride that we do have as Vistans for that neighborhood. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo Deputy Mayor Rigby's comments in that, first off, I'm very saddened that the community latched on to a very small portion of this major undertaking for revitalizing a historically blighted area of downtown for what really is a very minor sort of blip in the overall grand scheme of what we're doing and bring so much negativity and finding every possible thing to make something negative out of what's truly one of the most positive things to happen in Vista in the last couple of decades. As the city manager and I had a conversation a couple of years ago, yes, maybe it would have been nice to put Vista underneath the sign, like the design you're seeing now, some variant of this. But having the hummingbird, the lilac, Paseo Santa Fe, it accomplishes most of what I think we as a council were trying to accomplish in branding a separate and distinct area of Vista to highlight the positive attributes and changes that we're making to downtown, that this is not part of historic downtown. It's really not. This is not part of Vista Village. This is a separate, third, distinct district that we're working on creating a separate brand and identity for. You know, I've gotten comments from folks saying, "We don't know where Paseo Santa Fe is." And that's exactly the point of this sign, is to designate for people to know that this is Paseo Santa Fe. I wasn't on the council prior to 2012, yet I knew many years prior to that, going all the way back to 2007, the name Paseo Santa Fe. It was in the paper, it was in community forums. The city has done as much as the city can do without spending tremendous amounts of monetary resources in outreach to the community. This has been a very transparent and open process from day one. This is not something that's occurred in a closed-door, behind-the-scenes meeting. This was something that has been known to the public or was available for public information for many years. And I just want to thank staff that have worked on this project from the beginning at the tremendous job that they've done in bringing a very difficult situation to a very positive outcome. You know, redevelopment went away, so the primary funding sources for these projects changed. And it's been a very difficult struggle to continue moving Phase Two and Phase Three forward, but we're doing it. And that's something that it would be much better if the community were here today saying, "What tremendous work," and thanking staff for the work that they've done. So I'm not in favor of taking Paseo Santa Fe off the sign. I'm not in favor of taking the hummingbird off the sign. The city manager and I did have a conversation a couple of weeks ago. Maybe there's a way we can paint the lilac to make it for those who aren't immediately aware of what flower it's supposed to represent, to make it represent that more readily to them. I do think that if we're going to make any modification to the sign, that putting Vista underneath, similar to the artwork we have here, is the way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers, but communications are so difficult because we put stuff out there and I was guilty of things, on other things, until I really see it or it affects me, it's like, you know, near me, then I kind of don't pay a lot of attention and all of a sudden, you know, there it is and I'm like, "Well, where did that come from?" You know, so I'm guilty of those kind of things also. So, but we've been communicating, it just maybe it wasn't something that jumped out at people. So, but our sign, and our sign is so beautiful. When you look at the other signs in the other cities, I mean, that's a beautiful sign. It's much prettier than all the other cities, I think, so I'm real thrilled with it. And as far as the redevelopment, no other city is doing the massive things that we've just done. I mean, that whole corridor, drive to the other cities, I mean, we're one of the few cities that are doing something that great. So I'm just, it was kind of depressing to have all the negativity coming down on it. So, I see somebody else wants to talk. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess I'll take a different angle at this. You know, I think it's great that we are having this talk today. I mean, ten years ago, we wouldn't have been talking about this at all because I was at some of those meetings and not a whole lot of people were really interested in what we were doing in Paseo Santa Fe. So I think it's good. And I think that it shows that we do have pride in our city and we have a lot of things to be proud of. You know, we got a lot of history to be proud of and, you know, presently and in the future, we got things to be proud of as well. So I think this is all good and healthy and it's great that people are getting involved. The other part of this, you know, the branding effort that we're trying to accomplish here, I think it's working. I mean, I think this is the reason we're all here, we're talking about it, it's important to people. And I think it's great that people are asking the question, "What is the hummingbird doing on there?" Because we're letting people know that that is our city bird, you know, and the lilac, the same thing, you know? So, you know, a sign is to designate an area, is to inform people, and I think the sign is doing exactly that. And, you know, I wouldn't be opposed if the rest of council would like to look into it to have an entryway arch somewhere else to the city of Vista. I could support that. If we can afford to do that and we can find a way to do where it makes sense financially, you know, I think as you get off Vista Village, we can have a sign right there. I mean, introduction into the entire city. So I like the present sign. I wouldn't have too much of an issue with the rendering that we're looking at right now because I know some other cities have done that. You know, the Gaslamp has San Diego and Little Italy has, I guess, a tiny San Diego underneath it. So, you know, I think that would be okay. But I like it the way it is right now, but I'm willing to compromise and listen to others. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
Well, I just want to echo the comments about being appreciative for all of you who have taken the time to come and share with us how you feel. I think this sign, this is, I'm going to share with you both my initial remarks and thoughts and then I'm going to tell you where I'm at right now. When I very first saw the design, my very first thought was, "Why doesn't it say Vista anywhere?" That it was my first response. I have to say, the sign is gorgeous and it does represent some really amazing things the city's done. So a lot of kudos, I echo the kudos also. But I kind of understood that sense of wanting to claim and feel some of the pride in our city for this great accomplishment. And I think, I think by putting Vista on the sign somewhere, it allows our citizens to share in this success and for it to be their success. And so that's why I really do support adding Vista. I think I support adding Vista. I agree. I think that the rendering we're looking at right now with Vista on the bottom, I could probably take or leave the comma CA. Maybe I'd like to see Vista a little bit larger even. And I do agree that painting the hummingbird and the flower would not only give certainty to what it is, I too, I have to apologize, I do see what's being said about it and I can acknowledge that point of view. I think that painting it, as Councilmember Campbell suggested, is a phenomenal idea because, you know, we, you know, one of the things we love about Vista, we love our hummingbirds and they're gorgeous. The California lilac is a gorgeous flower. I think that by painting it, we could actually increase the beauty of that sign. So I think that's a really great idea. I'm pretty happy with this rendering, but given the amount of outpouring of interest that we've had, we might want to be very careful how we choose to amend the sign and modify it. Perhaps we want to publish, you know, what we think is our final choice or, you know, and maybe give it some time to ruminate so that we know, you know, if we let sixty days go by, perhaps, you know, the opportunity for everybody in the community to share the new drawing and for people who have a gift for social media to share it. And if there's going to be opposition to the new design, certainly we want to know about that in advance. But I think, I think that this one we're looking at right now is a good, is a good start. And again, just, you know, we're all here because we're proud of our city. The members of the council are proud of the city. You who have come to speak are proud of the city. And it's great. We live in one of the greatest places in the world and it's awesome. So I salute everybody that came down here and I thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question. Perhaps Mr. Meyer would have an answer. The top of the sign as it is right now, at night, it lights up. And if I'm not mistaken, and I have been there to see it, the hummingbird and the lilac change colors. Is that correct? There's different lighting behind it?
The lilac and the hummingbird are extruded machined aluminum and they sit on top of a cover and then it's backlit.
Right.
And that feature can change color, correct?
Would we lose that particular feature if we painted the bird and the lilac?
No.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if we did, if we would. Do we need to have a motion on this or are we just looking for direction to come back with different designs?
We're looking for direction and I think there's a few more speakers, but yeah, we are looking for direction from the city council, definitely.
I have one other speaker and Councilmember Campbell had wanted to say something.
I was going to see if we could have the public speaker.
Okay. Sarah Spinks. There she is, there she is.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Sarah Spinks. I actually, I'm a public arts commissioner for the city and I also live in the downtown area. I love the sign. I think it's beautiful. I love all the development going on. I understand so much work and we saw the archway at a meeting many months ago and it was like a sun ray. And then the unveiling happened and it was the hummingbird and the lilac, which I really love because I put that into a mural on the site of Crozier's Flowers after doing research and I chose that because of the significance to the city. I like the idea about painting the lilac on the sign, but I also kind of think that from my artist eye, it still is backlit and you still have this silhouette where it looks a little lumpy. So maybe changing the shape of the silhouette. Something I do in my professional life is seeing things maybe people aren't seeing because they're like this up on it. So sometimes when you take a step back, you can see maybe what people are seeing, but I think that that's, that would be my suggestion. That was the only thing I wanted to come up and say, is look at the silhouette of it and I kind of think, once we work that out, I think it's pretty. And I think that just saying Vista and not the California part would be, I think, a good compromise and everybody can enjoy the sign. I also appreciate all these people having so many opinions. It's really cool to see everybody so involved, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
So it sounds like there's maybe a consensus on the council to make some modification to the sign. And I think at this point, we're not at a phase to give exact direction or what exactly we wanted to say. So maybe if the city manager or Mr. Meyer would comment, maybe giving direction to staff to come back with a more finalized option, including either city of Vista or Vista underneath the sign with a little bit more of a finalized design for a future meeting to review that at that point. That would be my initial thought at this point.
Councilwoman Aguilera.
I would agree with that. I think the California should be dropped. That just gives more room to make Vista bigger. And I like Sarah's ideas of modifying and perhaps she can help, I don't know. It sounded like she was volunteering herself. But that would be nice to have that rearranged or, you know, modified, I guess. So I think that would be helpful before we make a decision. I think Councilman Franklin's idea of giving it sixty days to really sink in, I think is also a good idea. So that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you. Now, to finish what I was saying, I agree that painting the lilac and the bird, I really like the backlit feature that we have, but I just wanted to make sure that we could still have that feature if we changed the dynamic of the silhouette, which would be painting it. And I'm not opposed to changing the shape of the flower, although honestly, my mind did not go there when I looked at it. I knew what it was. It was a hummingbird with its beak and a flower. But I'm not opposed to that, so I agree. And then also agree with taking out California. I think Vista is sufficient right there and that would also make the name of our city bigger. So just to add my humble opinion to the consensus. Thank you for all of your work, Mr. Meyer.
So, and I agree. I think, I like the way that looks. I think with the Vista underneath, I think that, I mean, I think it's nice, so I think it gives a nice profile and so, and I love the sign. So do you have enough direction from us?
Yeah, so we will come back with mock-up options slash options if necessary for Vista underneath. We will also give you the cost of that. We'll provide the cost of what it would take to paint the flower as well as the bird. And we will also provide a cost to you on what it would take to modify the silhouette if that's what you would like to do. But definitely Vista underneath and we'll provide you some options on that.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
Two very brief thoughts. One, I would hope, since the electricity is already there, that we could go ahead and backlight Vista. And two, I would probably support the remilling of the shape of the flower. Several times, I'm pulling up images of the California lilac and it's more of a round shape, I think. I don't know how we would achieve that, but the point that I think Councilmember Campbell made about the silhouette, I think it was you that made that, someone did, when it's backlit, that's a valid point and I'd like to move on from that perception about the shape of it and just put that part of it to bed. And I have a feeling that that piece of aluminum is not a prohibitive cost in and of itself, but I'd like to know the cost before I get too far ahead of myself there.
We'll provide you that. And yes, whatever
And yes, whatever we propose underneath for the Vista portion would be backlit, just like the rest of the sign.
Okay. So are we putting that one to bed temporarily? Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to our next discussion item, which is the transnet sales tax. And this item was requested by Councilmember Franklin, so I'm going to ask him to introduce the item.
By the way, for everyone that's leaving, you're going to pay a half cent higher sales tax if this is approved. You might be interested to hear the conversation before you take off. I wanted to bring this up because this is going to be a really significant additional sales tax that we're being asked to pay in San Diego County.
Could you guys be quiet back in the back? Hello? Because we're still having a meeting? Thank you.
So I appreciate and I want to thank the city manager for arranging a meeting. I know some of our other councilmembers also met with the staff lead at Sandag about this proposed tax. The specific concern that I have at this time is the fact that our real regional transportation priority, and I've often thought if there was something meaningful that I could do as a member of our council to improve the lives of Vista, Vistans and to improve the economic picture, it would be to somehow be involved in a regional effort to improve our highway interchanges on the 78 with the 5 and the 15. And seeing that only 14% of this half-cent 40-year tax would be, under the current proposal, would be spent, our city manager, did they change that numbers? It's still 14% as of the last iteration? I think that's still the last iteration. At any rate, you know, two cities, Poway and Escondido, have passed resolutions disapproving of the current proposal. I don't know that we yet need to go that far. There certainly, there certainly is a real need for transportation infrastructure in our region that would meaningfully change the lives of our citizens in a positive way, that would meaningfully improve our economy in a positive way. But I am really concerned that first and foremost, in having talked to the chairman of Sandag who was presiding at the time when we did the second transnet, the first extension of Transnet One, we were promised that we would have construction on 78 to improve our interchanges and it did not happen. And it's really concerning that we, the voters approved a tax where North County residents were promised that one of our very biggest priorities would be addressed and it wasn't addressed. And I'm a strong believer in the fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on us. I think we really need to get some guarantees there. I'm also very concerned about the large amount of tax money that has no yet devised purpose that is going to be handed to cities to be spent. It will create a massive cash infusion for municipalities throughout the county, many of whom, including Vista, don't yet have a plan to spend that money. And I think it is 100% always the wrong way to spend to first raise a tax and to second, devise the purpose for that revenue. I think we should always have a strong purpose in mind and make absolute promises to voters about what the funds will be used for and then go out and ask voters to support a tax. Generally speaking, I'm opposed to new taxes unless they are really going to achieve a pressing, you know, value for taxpayers. I'm also very concerned about the model, you know, and I think it's totally relevant what's happening in Puerto Rico right now. The borrowing and the borrowing and the borrowing and the borrowing never stops and we're selling our future 40 years down the line. You know, we authorize these taxes and the day, you know, three years in, and we do it on day one, we know what we're going to do. We're going to go to Goldman Sachs and Wall Street and we're going to ask them to give us, you know, 96% of the money upfront and we're going to immediately ask the taxpayers right off the top, you know, some amazing portion of this is immediately slated to debt service because rather than do what we ought to do, which is government ought to collect tax revenue and they ought to create savings accounts for that tax revenue, invest money wisely as every taxpayer thinks their money is invested that's in government surpluses. And then from time to time, when true priorities arise, the current elected officials should have some decision-making power over how present funds collected and controlled in surplus are expended. But the model always is to, you know, to leverage. And someone today who is 18 years old, just beginning to vote, you know, 40 years from now is when they're going to have their, it's a whole, it's two generations. Two generations of future citizens are going to be bound by this tax and the decision-making power taken from them. And here we are in a situation, Transnet One has not yet expired because of the extension and now we're being asked to double Transnet One to add a half cent. This is not a new half cent, this is a doubling of the half cent. And I think, what do we have, 12 years left on the extension? Something like that? They will be back to us to ask us to extend Transnet One when it expires. We are addicted to these tax revenues and particularly, I would also point out that 50% of this money is slated to be used to pay, and they were here, a representative from Sandag came and spoke to us in front of the council. And I asked them, what is, what is the 50% that's for public transit operations? What does that go to pay for? It goes to pay for salaries, staff salaries. And I would suggest that when you bring on new staff, in 40 years from now, we're going to have hundreds or thousands of people employed on the income from this tax. Those people are not going to suddenly be put out of a job. The taxpayers will be put to question about, do you want to keep these people employed? So this is in fact a permanent tax. A temporary tax should only be used to pay for infrastructure. Permanent taxes should pay for ongoing operations and for salaries. So I think we've got some really troubling priorities in this tax, both that our regional needs as a North County city are not being met. The tax goes for too long. Instead of focusing on building balances that can do things successively as we build a cash balance for needed capital improvements, we're always borrowing and we're always asking the taxpayer right off the top to pay an extra four to, you know, whatever percent per year on debt service. And I think it's wrong because I don't, you know, other than buying a home, you know, I really want to put a swimming pool in my backyard, but I'm not going to go borrow the money to do it. When I have cash to do it, I'll put a swimming pool in my backyard because it's not the right thing to do to go borrow that money and pay debt service. If I'm always paying debt service, then I'm continually diminishing the amount of cash that I have to operate with. And I'm telling you, Puerto Rico is a prime example of what excessive government borrowing does and no one, no one is standing up to excessive borrowing, excessive taxation. And I'm going to do it. I'm going to stand up to excessive taxation. I'm going to stand up to excessive borrowing. That's what I've got to say.
You all done? Okay. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess I get to be the one who has a little bit of a different argument. But as simple as it sounds to save money and wait to build a project, I don't think there's any of you here in the audience that wants to wait 30 years to add more lanes to the freeways or work on solving transportation problems. There's a couple of issues with that. One, the value of the tax dollars that you'd be putting into an account under our investment portfolios that we're allowed to participate in would actually lose value over time and it would actually be detrimental to taxpayers to put money away currently and save it for 25 years because it would be worth far less 25 years from now than it is using that money today. It's actually a very wise, sound, fiscally conservative policy to leverage the resources and borrow against future tax revenue at historically low interest rates, which are lower than the inflationary pressures that that money would face 10, 15 years from now. While it sounds really great to say, no new taxes, let's be responsible, save money, we'd actually be costing taxpayers money. The value of that dollar would be insufficient to build the project 25, 30 years from now and we would have to do a half-rate project or more than likely, not even do the project. Because secondly, more often than not, when we accumulate, not cities or the state accumulates a large amount of money, even if it's designated for a specific function, politicians or taxpayers say either lower our taxes, refund the money, or use it for another pressing project. And the money that it was designated for, the project, never gets done. So, sitting up here, it's very easy if I were to say, I'm opposed to any new tax, whatever the purpose is for, we get enough money now, we have enough taxes, let's not do it. It's a great political soundbite, but it's not responsible governing. And we're elected to evaluate projects, evaluate revenues and make hard decisions that aren't always the most popular. But at the end of the day, we in San Diego County know that we need more transportation options, we need fixes to our freeways, we need fixes to our interchanges. These things don't happen overnight. And they especially aren't going to happen unless we here on Vista and other cities throughout the county take and work together on solving those problems. The money, it doesn't exist right now. Quite frankly, the gas tax revenues that go towards building and improving roads, those revenues are down because gas prices are down. So while we may have higher taxes on gas in California, it doesn't pay currently for the road maintenance, nonetheless, building new freeway lanes. There's a lot of complicated factors that go into these ballot measures or asking for new revenue. It's a lot more complicated than just going, we've got more projects we want to build, so would you mind paying more in sales tax? That's not how it works. You know, I had an opportunity last week to meet with one of the deputy or assistant secretaries for the California State Transportation Agency, had an opportunity to talk with the executive director of Sandag. You know, there's so much more than even what's in this proposal of projects that are going on for light rail, for grade separations, for road improvements, for long-term transportation strategies. So I'd encourage all of you and my council colleagues to get more involved in that process. This is not something that's just come up over the last few months. This has been a multi-year process. And there's a reason why governmental agencies and even businesses like Apple borrow money to do projects today because it's a sound fiscal policy to make sure that their investors and in our case, taxpayers, get the best value for those projects.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In looking over this proposal, this is the Sandag's most recent iteration of this measure, which I understand the board of directors has voted on or will be voting on on Friday, will be voted on this Friday. I'm glad to see, looking through this, and I only received a copy of this today, that at least the gondola from City of San Diego has been taken out of this iteration. And there, I want to reiterate what Councilman Franklin said about you fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. There is a reason that the cities of Poway and Escondido both unanimously voted to not support this current iteration because there really, as was stated, there are no guarantees. And 42% of the monies that are going to be raised in this particular tax go to San Diego, another 8% go to Chula Vista. The City of Vista will be receiving 3% of the monies that are raised. Granted, a lot of us drive throughout the county, but most of us spend most of our time on our travel here in the North County region. We've already paid a lot of money into these taxes for North County projects that never happened. And yes, the original transnet tax, they came back at us, they asked for an extension. It got extended and now they've come back and they're saying, that's not enough, we want an additional half-cent sales tax so that we will be paying a 1% sales tax to the transnet funds. So there are too many problems I see with this particular iteration for us here in this region and in the City of Vista particularly. So I cannot support this and I would like to see, or I would actually like to move that we, I would move that we do not support the iteration of this transnet tax at this time.
I have a couple of speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers? Okay, Dale Pilot. Is Dale Pilot here? I'd be followed by Fred Smith.
It is my honor to speak to everyone tonight about a very important issue. My name is Dale Pilot. I live in Shatter Ridge District on the south side of Melrose. I am a former Sales Tax Oversight Committee member and a current Public Safety Commissioner for the City of Vista. The issue on the agenda tonight is one of legalized theft. To put it more eloquently, collecting more taxes is absolutely necessary, excuse me, collecting more taxes than is absolutely necessary is legally robbery. This is from President Calvin Coolidge. As many of you already know, Sandag is proposing a new sales tax increase. However, I view it simply as an unnecessary growth in government. As an American, I take pride in knowing our nation was founded upon the principles of limited government, lower taxes, individual freedom and divine providence. If we are to look around our state, even though we have elected many leaders, both at the county and city levels, who share those same uniquely American principles, taxes continue to increase. Burdensome regulation kill our jobs and individual freedoms continues to diminish our communities. This pattern of government overreach must be stopped and reversed immediately. Tonight, the agenda calls for you, our elected local leaders, our public servants, to vote on whether or not to support an increase in legalized theft, AKA tax increase. I come before you today as a Vistant resident, property owner, and demand that my elected representatives join in the communities of Poway and Escondido in sending a clear message to Sandag, no new taxes. It is my hope you will all vote to protect our freedom, which is more than just the freedom to speak, but also includes the hard-earned money in our pockets. We don't need these taxes. If we live within our means, pay down our debts, pay our bills and work on building up our reserves, we can actually do things a lot more than continually raising taxes on the people that are already overtaxed as it is. I think I'd like to, I'm probably speaking for the rest of the people here, they probably feel the same way as I do, that we really need to stop this overtaxation because as of right now, Vista has an eight and a half percent sales tax. If this half percent sales tax goes through, Vista will now be at 9%. It already is the highest in North County. Let's not make it any higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred Smith.
Thank you for hearing me. I didn't know anything about this until I just sat down and happened to be reading about it and Councilman Franklin started talking about this. You are talking about these arches and all the money you're spending as if this money belongs to you or the city raised this money. This money is coming out of every person that lives within the City of Vista, everybody that spends a dollar in the City of Vista. It doesn't take much of a rocket scientist to realize if you jack up the sales tax, people can go to San Marcos, they can go to Carlsbad, they can go anywhere and buy and they can buy without that extra half a cent sales tax. There's no freebie here. You aren't operating in a bubble. We have a sales tax increases. Sacramento's already asked to extend another tax that we hadn't voted in for two years. It's one tax after another. I want the council to vote against this. I think most of the people in the city would if they knew what's going on. It's time to stop raising the taxes. My property taxes are $6,700 a year and I can't even get the police to come out and answer a phone call, I mean, answer a call. So tell me what I'm getting for my $6,700 plus my sales tax. So, tell me what I'm getting for my $6,700 plus my sales tax, and why I care about the city. I like the sign, I like the city, I like the concept. I don't like you spending my money to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Campbell.
Well, to address the last speaker, this sales tax proposal from Sandag is actually a county-wide proposal to fund transportation projects all throughout the county. And actually, the allocations to local jurisdictions, you know, one of the arguments that, why that's in there, is that local jurisdictions know how best to address the transportation and roadway improvement needs in each of those communities. So I think it would be a little bit disingenuous to ask that every city submit a plan for the next 20-year development of every roadway in each jurisdiction for the voters, and San Diego to vote on projects that would be done in Vista. You know, for us, we normally talk about local control, and local cities know how to best spend monies that come in. I think, Councilman Franklin, you'd be the first to argue that those monies should be turned over to the local jurisdictions for best improving the transportation within our city. In terms of spending tax dollars for the Paseo project, you know, that was not local money, that was prior redevelopment money that was used for those projects. The city manager, if you could just briefly address maybe that.
Yeah, the primary funds that went into the Paseo Santa Fe project for Phase 1 were redevelopment funds, as well as transnet monies as well.
So, those are the types of projects that these proposals and initiatives fund. You know, I had a long conversation with one of the high-level officials from the California Transportation Agency, talking about the great projects that we're doing here in Vista, and the importance of maintaining stable funding sources, so that we're able to maintain our streets and roadways before they get dilapidated and run down. You know, the streets in Vista today, I think we can all here on the council probably agree, that they're in the best shape today than that they've ever been in. And that's due to proper planning, maintenance, and transnet monies that came from the transnet tax. Without those monies, the streets in Vista would not be to the level that they are today. So, it's never an easy thing to say, let's raise taxes. Nobody likes it. I don't like it. I don't like sales taxes. I think they're one of the most regressive forms of taxation that there are. But, in California, our hands are very tied, all the way from Sacramento to Vista, in how we can raise revenue. We're not like other cities, or other states. We can't approve additional revenue increases here, it's the voters that do it. And fortunately, years ago, the voters of the city had the wherewithal to approve Prop L, which built new fire stations in the city, which built the city hall, which have brought in a revitalization for business, and created new jobs in the city. And that's the types of things that drive big companies to create good-paying jobs to locate in cities like Vista. I was on a trip recently for the California-Mexico Trade Initiative, in Mexico City for four days, with the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, and had great conversations with multi-billion-dollar companies about the importance of maintaining global competitiveness, and how Vista, specifically, some of the things that we're doing, from economic development to the improvements that we're doing downtown, improving the image of our city, help attract companies like that to locate in cities like ours. So, what we're doing, we need to stay the course, we need to continue to work to improve our roadways, improve transportation, and while this proposal from Sandag is not finalized, that's an important thing to note, this is a draft, there is still opportunity for public comment, before the Board of Directors at Sandag, and ultimately, at the polls. So, we're not voting to increase the tax, or not increase the tax, or anything like that here, so.
So you can sit down.
I'm sorry, this is not the opportunity for that, sir.
No, you, sir, you say no. You can't, you don't have, you can't, sir.
This is not the opportunity for that.
This is not a debate.
This is, no.
It is a debate. It becomes a bigger debate when citizens get together.
You have to, sit down, sir.
Sir, you're out of order here.
Okay, so, and I'll just say something, that the vote is not at Sandag to make the tax, the vote is to give everyone a choice, whether they want to have a half-cent sales tax or not, and it's a, it's a jobs bill, it would create hundreds and hundreds of jobs, because there's projects all over the county, it also, it's a quality-of-life bill. The 78 will not get anything done to it until at least 2035 and possibly later, unless this half cent passes. And if the half cent passes, they're going to put two lanes on each side, and both ends. And that's, and that's an early-action project, it's in, there is an early-action project, or it will not get supported by the mayors in our North County. So, just, and I, and it's also, if you don't have matching funds, matching funds which this would create, you don't get money from the feds or the state to build projects. In order to build a project, they'll have grants that are out there, but in order to get a grant, you have to have matching funds, so you have to have the money from somewhere. So, we don't have to do anything, it's a quality-of-life thing, you got, it's your choice, it's going to be, I don't see what's a bad thing of putting it on the ballot, so that the people, so you can make a choice, and you can vote against it, you all can vote against it, and it won't happen. Or you can make the choice, and look at the projects on there, and say, for North County, we want the 78 built, and we, we're willing to pay that. So, but it's your choice, it isn't, we're not making the decision to have that tax, to give it to you, we're giving you the choice of that. So, with that, I see everybody else wants to talk again, so, starting with Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. If I had my way, and could wave my magic wand, no government agency would have the right to put on the ballot a tax increase. I know that tax increases are sometimes necessary, but I would prefer a system where we either own 100% of the accountability, or don't have the power, and if the citizens want more government services, then they could form a political committee, and they could come up with their own tax proposal. It's just a thought there. We very much do have a vote to raise tax. Our city has a seat on the San Diego Association of Governments, our representative to Sandag will cast a vote to approve this measure, and Sandag will use considerable public monies to advocate for, within the confines of law, for the passage of this tax. Many well-funded special interests that have literally billions to gain, will have strong motivation to spend many millions to achieve passage of whatever tax is ultimately proposed. The citizens, not one of us, and no group among us, will be able to match the special interest spending that will support a new tax. So, it is incredibly important that we use our, our very important privilege as a member of Sandag to shape the proposal that is ultimately sent to the voters, because the voters will have no means truly to hear the opposing voice. And there will be many millions of dollars spent to favor the, the tax. And I just want to say, with all respect to my colleague, and I appreciate, you know, I only have four years of college learning, so I always appreciate an education in math, it wasn't my strong suit, I'll admit that, but I know something, it's a false argument, it always has been and always will be, to say that borrowing money and paying debt service is cheaper than the cost of inflation. Let me tell you something, if you're a bank, and you lend money, you have to charge more than the cost of inflation. Do you know why did they teach you that? Because if you don't, then you lose your principal. So, we can never borrow money at a cheaper cost than the rate of inflation increases. That is a totally false argument, it is always wrong, and excessive debt has destroyed many governments, and has, has brought many civilizations to its knees. We're truly seeing it, if you've been watching the news, then you'll see it's happening in Puerto Rico right now. I mean, I, I tell you, if you don't know what's happening in Puerto Rico, you need to know about it, because your federal tax dollars are being asked for right now, to bail them out, they borrowed, and they borrowed, and they borrowed, and now they can't pay it back. It's extremely relevant to this debate, I wanted to make that point. Also, when we sell these bonds, they don't tell you about a thing called capitalized interest. There's not enough money in the first few years of any of these taxes to pay the note. So they say, Mr. Banker, gee, we don't want to wait three or four years to get started with this, give us all the money today, and what we'd like to do is, if you could just lend us a little extra, so we could make the payments. Because the tax revenue is not even enough to make the payments. So that's called capitalized interest, something that I think is done in government far more than it's done whenever Apple goes out for a corporate piece of paper. We did choose to raise taxes to pay for critical infrastructure in the city of Vista, and I don't, I'm not trying to reopen that argument, but we in Vista made a decision about local infrastructure. I believe that taxes should be primarily at the local level, so that citizens have an opportunity. I, I don't think anyone in this room, in fact, I really don't know, I could look it up, but I don't know where Sandag meets, maybe it's down at the county government building, probably. The point is, this is in people's community, taxes and power should reside locally, not at the county level, not at the state level, and not at the federal level. We should raise taxes when necessary for local infrastructure, and, and shame on us for advocating, if we do, for anything which we say, well, we need money to come back to the city, so let's have the county or the state raise it. Do you think the county or the state's going to give 100% to us of the money that they raise for local purposes? It will always lose a nickel, or eight cents, or 10 cents for every dollar collected when it passes its way from the feds, to the state, to the county, and all the way down to us. Everybody takes a nickel every step along the way. It's not good practice to raise taxes and not know what the purpose is for. I almost thought I heard somebody saying I was advocating for the elimination of transnet 1. I'm not eliminating, I'm not advocating for the elimination of the current transnet tax. We will have more revenues in some, I don't know, 20 years, when we have more revenue from, from what's bonded. I'm also not up here expressly advocating against any new tax. What I am saying is, make them prove it to us, make the proposal one that is fair to North County residents, make it one that does not offer goodies, presents, and enrichments to municipalities whom control all of the votes on Sandag, in order to acquire their votes. My concern, one of my concerns, is that, you know, 30% of the local money goes to the cities, which is a great reason for the cities who control all the votes on Sandag to, to vote in favor of sending this to the taxpayers. We don't have a meaningful plan right now, we're going to take our city of Vista vote on Sandag, and we're going to say, yes, give us 30% of this half-cent for the next 40 years. We can't tell the voters right now how we would spend that money. We know we have good uses for it, there are million good uses, and there's always a shortage of, of monies to pay for these million good uses, for tax money. At what point do we begin to choose our priorities versus constantly say to the taxpayer, you can afford another 1%, you can afford another half percent? At what point, you know, we, we pay, we pay more than 50% in combined payroll, state and federal. When you add the 8.5% that we pay in the city of Vista, when we spend our money, the amount of money that we pay is, it's, it's well more than half, well more than half of our income. And one of the, one of my favorite things, I like to ask college students, how much tax do you think we pay? If a man earns a dollar, how much of it do you think that he gets to keep? 10, 15%? That's what the answer usually is. I would ask every single person, and especially those of us on this dais, at what point, if I, most would agree, if I took 100% of your dollar, if you earn a dollar and I take 100 cents, most would agree that that is immoral. But where do you draw the line? If I take 78 cents of your dollar, is that immoral too? Is 68 cents immoral? At what point do we play such a burden, because of our failure to lead, and our inability to choose between competing priorities, and our inability to look at citizens and say, you know what, government can't be all things to all people, and so there are very finite, necessary purposes for tax revenue and tax spending, and we have to choose between those things, and it sometimes has to be tough. I'll bring my remarks to an end here. Yeah, that's all, that's all I've got right now, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because I've had concerns with this proposed ballot measure, this proposed tax increase for well over a year myself, I did meet with the Executive Director of Sandag, he came up here to Vista to talk to me, and I appreciated his time and his effort in coming up here, but he wasn't able to really address my concerns or, or lay them aside. In fact, more questions came up for me out of that meeting than were answered for me. I do take issue with government, any government, whether it's local, state, or federal, taking money from the people and saying, let me just have your money, but I'm not sure what I'm going to do with it yet, but I'm positive I can find something. That's not the way any level of government should work, not even this level of government. So I have a problem with that. I have some concerns with the process of this whole thing over the last year and a half that I've been aware of it. So, those are my concerns, that I, made me want to meet with the Executive Director, and also, I spoke with the city manager, and I too had asked for this to be on the agenda this evening. So with that, I am going to restate my motion, in that I had, I moved that this city council not support, I moved that we do not support this tax increase measure at this time.
In its present form.
In its present form.
I would second that motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Franklin, 401 B Street, Sandag.
401 B Street?
Yes.
Good to know.
Well, you're right about having a seat at the table, we do. And we actually, you know, do matter at Sandag, and I think some of the discussion that has happened at Sandag over the last couple of months is some of your concerns. So you can know that those, those things have been addressed. So some of the things that I know North County has been advocating for, and the mayor has been advocating for, is lockboxing any kind of money that does get raised from this tax. So some of the projects that are being addressed are Highway 78, we all know, I think everybody in the county knows, that 78's one of the worst highways, if not the worst highway actually, in North, in San Diego County, I should say, not North County, San Diego County. So, those, that project is, is being designated, you know, in the funds, the connectors to the 15 and the 5 are also being designated. In addition to that, widening of Highway 5 is also a necessary item, and that's also being designated as well. So, the only way I can support it is if we do designate funds for projects like this, because I think those are important projects, not for convenience, but for commerce. Because our highways are very important, not only to move people around our North County, and to get them to San Diego, but there's trucks.
Goods.
Goods that come through Highway 78, Highway 5, and they gotta, they gotta move, you know, I mean, it's not just about moving people, it's about moving business. And this measure is trying to address that. And I'm not a big fan of some of the items that are in, in the, you know, in the proposal, but we do have to understand that North County's not the only place. We're dealing with South County, they have their own needs that need to be addressed, which are slightly different than our needs. And we have to find a compromise, and I, I think a county compromise is probably the best way to do this. The city of Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, and Oceanside are not going to be able to raise enough money to fix Highway 78. There's just no way. I mean, we're talking, as it is, if we, if we wait for the current transnet to fix this problem, the mayor's right, we're looking at 2035, and I don't know about you, but I'm not waiting until 2035 to sit on Highway 78 when it's already. it's already, it's a mess. So designate the funds, we need to continue to advocate for that. Projects similar to this, I mean, we've got pages and pages of projects that are already being designated, you know, and I just think that, to me, every dollar needs to be designated, and they do need to be lockboxed. I agree with you on that, you know? Let's go ahead and lockbox the projects. But today, we're just talking about, let's let the voters decide. It's not for us to decide, it's for the people out here to let them decide. And if the people decide no, then, then we don't do it. You know, and I think that's all we're looking at doing here. So we're not, we're not going to decide for the city of Vista, we're just going to allow it to, the voters of Vista to actually decide on this. So that's, that's my opinion.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with Councilman Aguilera's comments that ultimately, we're not talking about voting for or against this measure, we're talking about putting it out to the voters of the county to decide on the merits of the projects that are on the list. So to go into this whole discussion of how taxes are raised and spent in San Diego for transportation projects really isn't what we're even talking about. We're talking about, do these projects that are proposed in the draft that may change, may have some modifications, so we're arguing about something that may not even come to fruition at the Sandag meeting? So ultimately, I'm in favor of letting the voters of the county decide yea or nay come November.
Councilwoman Franklin.
If we were arguing over a 20-year half-cent sales tax, or excuse me, a 20-year quarter-cent sales tax that was promised to be spent only to improve local highway infrastructure, you wouldn't hear a peep out of me. The reality is, I mean, I understand this, I don't understand this line about, let the voters decide. The voters don't get to decide. The voters are given one ransomed option. You want your highways, then you'll pay for our pet projects too. 14%? 14% for the highways? We get 10% for open space? We got 41%, they took it from 50 down to 41% for, for mass transit and capital operations. Half of that, almost half of that is for ongoing operations instead of capital. And the 30%, the 30%, I mean, could we at least agree that the city of Vista, because we went to the voters and we asked for our half cent to do good things for our city, we're sitting in one of those good things, but we already spent it. Chula Vista is rumored to be developing a resolution of opposition because they have their own tax proposal that they don't want to compete. Some cities have had the foresight and said, we need the money. They went to the taxpayers, they made their argument, fine. But we're going to go to every city in the county, all 80-some municipalities, is it? That's fewer than that, there's only, what, 16, 18 members of Sandag? There's, there's more municipalities that don't have seats on the, but, but everybody gets, everybody shares in the, in the tax money. But the point is, we're going to go out to them and we're going to say, we know you'll find good things to spend this money on. I mean, it's 30%, this is not a small number. You know, we could, it's a 28-year tax at a half cent, that's, you know, that's, you know, again, I'm not a math major, but to me, 30%, or, you know, 70% of 40 years is 28 years. So we could pay the tax for 28 years, potentially. I mean, again, you're going to get my, my HP Scientific Calculator out here, but the point is, so much additional expense to pay for local priorities that are yet unidentified. And remember, remember, we still have Transnet One. We still have the existing half-cent sales tax. We're still getting regular allotments for local transportation priorities. We're still getting money from the federal government every year. We're still getting money from the state of California. It's not like this is our only source of dollars for transportation spending. That's not the truth. The truth is that this is a, an augmentation. It's an additional amount. And so to say that, you know, we're not going to get any of these things paid for, again, I highly support, we are so desperate to have our highway interchanges improved on the 78, that I do support that, I really do. But I think we need to use our position on the Sandag Board to advocate, and this is, I think, and I'll ask the deputy mayor to correct me if I'm wrong, but what I think that, at least speaking for myself and perhaps the deputy mayor, is that we're asking for the city of Vista to advocate for, and I hope achieve, a better outcome for the taxpayers in what is ultimately proposed. Because you can say, well, let the taxpayers decide. The taxpayers have no decision-making authority whatsoever over what actually gets proposed and their own tax dollars used to support the advocacy for. And, you know, but we do. And they charged us with that responsibility for them. And so it's our job for them to say, you know what? There's going to be a tax proposal, but we're going to go out and we're going to advocate for a responsible proposal that pays for the things you need and says no to the things you don't. What I'm really asking for, and what the, the motion that's on the table, is to say no to this iteration and ask for a more responsible proposal. That's, and there are several other cities that are, that are already doing that, we'd be joining with them. It's not like we're the only ones that are going to stand up and say that we don't think that this current proposal is responsible.
This is not the final proposal. This, this is still, and the vote, the vote on Friday is whether or not to put on the ballot, not whether we're going to approve this proposal. This proposal is still being worked on.
Did you just say that we're going to vote to put it on the ballot before we have the final proposal? Is that like we have to pass the bill so we can find out what's in it? I, I don't think that worked out well for us the last time we tried that.
Fine, okay.
Can we call for the vote?
Can we just call for the question?
Thank you.
And, oh, I have one more speaker. How about Cliff Kaiser? Come on, come on down, Cliff.
I'll be brief. I agree, this is not a voter issue right now. We need you guys to fight with every ounce of energy you have at Sandag and on this Transit to get what we need here in Vista. I don't want to have to go to the ballot in November and say yea or nay to a bunch of stuff that I have no, no input on. That's what we need you for. And I think that's some comments that Mr. Franklin was making. We need you to represent Vista and say, this is the way we want it to look like. And I think the bigger issue that's going to have to be fought over a longer time is you have to drive efficiency. We can't be, we have to figure out a way to stop paying millions and billions of dollars for work that can be done in a much more efficient and much more costly manner. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Please call for the question.
As W. Mayor Rigby stated, the motion is to not support the tax measure. As currently presented.
As, in the, and I want to be specific about this, and, Mr. Johnson, are we going to get, is there going to be voted on a, is there going to be another draft of the proposal before the vote to approve it, before the vote to put it on the ballot? No.
I'm not sure. The only thing I know is that the board has an agenda for Friday that is, that mirrors what you have in your packet as, as the exhibit.
So Sandag will vote, and our representative to Sandag will vote yea or nay on this proposal on Friday. That is our present understanding.
That's correct.
Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to restate, and I'm going to try and do it word for word, but I think...
Use your, use your microphone, Councilman Franklin, please.
This is the April 25th proposal, I think, or April 22nd, that we have in front of us, file number 320,000. And this is the specific proposal. What I'm asking for is, and this is an aside, but to clarify the intent, is I'm asking for our representatives to fight for a better proposal, to reject this proposal in an effort to get to a better proposal. And so I think what the motion is, and what I've seconded is, to oppose the April 22nd, 2016, file number 320,000 proposal.
Councilwoman Aguilera.
In its present form.
How do you define better? Vague.
It is vague, but so is this proposal. This proposal lacks almost all element of detail. And it, this is truly is going to be, you have to, you have to vote in favor of it so you can find out what's, what's in it. I mean, to, I've made, I've, I mean, I can repeat all of my arguments. I think one of the most...
That's not necessary, please.
No, I understand that, but I think one of the most key points is, how much money is basically sent back out to the municipalities? And also, how much money is reserved for highway spending? Those two things, and perhaps the deputy mayor has something else in mind, but those two things in my mind would be key to a better proposal.
Well, I guess I don't get where you're missing, I mean, the page seven of, of the Sandag agenda item has a bunch of highways on it, so does page six. What we're going to get as a city in the first year is $2.1 million. Over 40 years as a city, we're going to get $130 million. Carlsbad's going to get $149 million. I'm not exactly sure what you mean by this not being clear.
Well, these are projections based on, on what we think we're going to get in, in bond revenue. What I'm saying is, on page number four, where we have the allocation of priorities in a summary fashion, where again, where you have 30% going to transit grants, where you have, you know...
But that's just a summary, and then you go into the next page and it starts talking about...
Breaks fall down.
I understand that that's just a summary, but my issue is, is what the summary denotes, which is the fact that we have, you know, probably about 18 to 20% of this is going to be spent on permanent salaries, where it's supposed to be a temporary tax. I raised that point. I raised the point about...
Where does it say the salaries? Where does it show you that?
Of the 41.7% for transit, capital, and operations, transit operations, ongoing operations...
That, that's, that's the trains and the buses and the...
We asked specifically of the representative that was here, and that's salaries.
I, I was just told today the 100% of it goes to...
Capital projects and, and operations, I'm only trying, whether it's salaries or it's the cost of new brakes for the train, the point is, there are capital outlays and then there are operational outlays. And I don't think that we should be raising a new temporary tax to increase the operational footprint of government.
They're putting a whole new, there's a whole new train that's going to go from San Diego up to University City, I think is where it, the mid-coast. And, and in order to have that, it costs money for the operations. So part of that is probably for, I'm guessing is for that. I don't have that right in front of me, but I'm, I'm thinking that that's for the operation. So sometimes, when we passed our tax, we had, we had firemen's salaries in there.
I'm going to restate that 81.4% of this tax is for mass transit, be it capital or operations, for open space, actually, I'm sorry, it's 82. something, for, for open space and for the local infrastructure grants, okay? My major issue with the division of resources is the fact that only 14% is set to be spent on highways, which I believe is the major selling point for this tax. When we go to the voters, when Sandag goes to the voters, when the advocacy for this tax takes place, we know what the sales point is going to be. It's going to be better highways and better regional transportation system on the roads. That's what voters are voting on, that's what they care about, and I don't believe...
Voters up in North County, voters of San Diego, we hear from them, it's mass transit.
I'm, I'm here to represent voters of North County. That's what I care about.
This is county-wide, this is a regional, this is a regional thing, and it has to be something in every area for some, everyone, or it won't pass.
I don't think 14% is enough, and that's the reason for my opposition. If you disagree, you're on the other side.
Do you think one of those cities is going to change that?
But you need to understand, a lot of that money is coming to North County, that 14%.
I don't think it's enough, and I don't think, given the fact...
Well, Sandag has, has determined that that is enough to do the, the project, so...
The other thing is, and I'll just be very clear about this, the fact that this lacks so much definition, and the fact that you're saying there's going to be a lockbox, but it's not done yet, and that we have to vote in favor of sending it to the voters before the final proposal, how do we know? We were promised before, I talked to the chairman of Sandag, okay? I'm not as educated in this subject matter as he is by, by far, and he told me when I advocated for the first Transnet tax, it was promised that we would get these improvements to 78. They never happened.
Well, the reason they didn't happen is because it was 10 years in litigation, they couldn't, because it was in litigation for 10 years, and environmentalists, because they couldn't decide which side of the river to put the 76 on, it's probably 76.
How do we know we're not going to be right back in the same situation? Look, I, I think, I think that perhaps we may have a disagreement.
We can debate this all day.
And if you want to call the question, I, I've stated what I plainly, what I think...
Can I call for a point of order?
Call the question.
I, I would like to request that the motion be ruled out of order, because this has expanded well beyond a discussion item on a proposed Transnet tax. We've developed the motion now into an opposition to something else that was not agendized, and would request that the motion maker re-agendize said item for a future meeting that has an action item associated with that item.
Great.
I don't understand. It's been properly agendized, we're discussing it. What's, what's the, what's the issue?
I don't think the public knew we were going to be voting on it.
We put it on the agenda so that the public could understand that we were going to discuss this issue.
The item that was agendized says, discuss a potential. Let's see exactly how you worded it.
Our city attorney, care to weigh in on that?
Discuss the potential Transnet sales tax proposal.
I, I feel that we've well expanded beyond the discussion of a potential to general opposition to transportation taxes in the future versus making a discussion and receiving information.
Generally speaking, action can be taken on an item that is on the agenda if it's clearly enough expressed. In my view, the discussion of the potential proposal clearly envisioned the possibility of taking some type of stand on that as opposed to just an abstract discussion, so I think the motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Can we call the question? I move to call the question. There's a second?
I, where, where do you...
Does anybody else have? Do we not want to call it? We've got a motion and a second to call the question.
You have a motion and a second, right?
To call the question.
Oh, a motion and a second to call the question?
Right.
I don't think you need that.
We need to vote on that?
You don't need a motion, you don't need a second for that.
No, we're just going to vote on the motion on the, on the table.
Okay. Are we voting on the measure? Are we voting on, are we, are we ready to cut off debate? Yes? So we're going to vote on the motion to oppose this proposal in its current form?
Yes.
Okay. And I, a yes vote will oppose.
Correct.
A yes vote will oppose?
Yes.
Okay, a yes vote will oppose the measure.
A no vote will disapprove of the motion. Thank you.
Motion fails. So can we move on to the next discussion item? Please. Okay. The next discussion, now we go to our public hearings. I wrote all over, they're saying I can't read it anymore. First public hearing is a downtown specific plan amendment for the public art requirement. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the proposal to amend the downtown specific plan, adding a provision of public art as a condition of development. So public hearing is now open, and the director of Community Development Engineering, John Conley, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed amendment to the downtown specific plan. This is the land use document for the downtown area, which is about 280 acres, roughly encompassing downtown Vista and the Santa Fe Corridor. The plan was last updated in September of last year. The update involved a project advisory committee, which was assembled with both property owners and tenants of businesses, as well as elected officials, to review the plan and make recommendations for changes. Part of those recommendations included establishing a public arts requirement or a fee in lieu of public art for new development within the specific plan area. When we brought the plan forward in 2015, we excluded the public art requirement because we wanted to consider that separately. So there were major revisions in the plan have been adopted, and we're considering the public art request this evening. The amendment would add a public art implementation program into the text of the downtown specific plan. The program would require the public art be included in any new development within the downtown specific plan area at a value of 15 cents per square foot of new building area, and that would only apply to any development exceeding 1,500 square feet in building area. The value of that artwork, once that calculation is done, there would be a value determined, and then an artwork would be determined based on that valuation if it was to be placed on site in consultation between the city and the applicant. The public art that would be placed on site, if they chose on site, would be reviewed as part of a project entitlement, so a site development plan or special use permit that would go to the planning commission or the... would go to the planning commission or the city council, would be the decision-making authority for public art placed on-site. Public art placed in the public right-of-way or on city property would be reviewed in compliance with our current policy on public art, which goes before the public arts commission and ultimately to the city council. Any funds that we would collect through this program, or through the in lieu, if developer opted to pay the in lieu fee, would be used within the downtown specific plan area, and that's shown here on the overhead. It includes the six planning districts within the specific plan, encompassing the Vista Village, Paseo Santa Fe, and downtown Vista, as well as the transit centers on either side of those corridors. The staff's evaluation of this issue also looked at other cities within the region to determine who else has public art requirements. Of the North County cities that were looked at, there are three that include a public art requirement. Those are Escondido, San Marcos, and Solana Beach. Included a table in the staff report that was provided before the meeting that summarizes what those different cities do in the way of charging it and how it's spent. Both in Escondido and Solana Beach, it's a citywide requirement, whereas in San Marcos, it's only for their university district specific plan. A specific plan amendment requires a formal recommendation from the planning commission, which was received on April 5th, and they adopted a resolution which includes all the findings required by the government code, and that was provided as part of your staff report. The specific plan amendment is consistent with policies in the general plan and in the downtown specific plan, which are also highlighted in the commission resolution and are part of their formal recommendation. And with that, staff's recommending to amend the downtown specific plan to include a public art requirement, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, councilor Rigby, or deputy mayor Rigby? Did you have speakers? Oh, okay, because I, you have... Okay, we have 10 speakers, so we'll start with Marcus Oliver. He'll be followed by Adam Hutchinson.
My name is Marcus Oliver. I'm 32 years old. I'm an entrepreneur, owner of Magnus Security, a private security firm here in San Diego County. You may have seen us here in Vista. We provide crossing guards and security guard services for your local high schools. I wanted to share my story with you as this relates to the proposed public art fee. The proposal really struck home with me as I've been househunting for the past few months. And although I was generally aware of the housing issues, the fire in the kitchen is a lot hotter than I expected. Although I own a successful business, and my fiance brings home a solid income as an RN, we're far from wealthy, and we're definitely not rich, especially in California. Fortunately for us, we have the ability to afford a dilapidated half million dollar starter home, with no air conditioning, mediocre schools, a neighborhood watch, AKA local transients. However, we still can't purchase a home, because the moment we put an offer in, there's eight to 10 offers on the table. People are literally turning in offers without even seeing the home, throwing contingencies into the wind without caution.
Does this have to do with their public art?
It sure does.
Okay.
We have placed at least eight offers on homes. Most have been coming in 5% above asking price, with the asking coming in 3% to 5% above the local comps. Keep in mind, we're talking about subpar neighborhoods, subpar school districts, subpar homes built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. My fiance and I had a serious discussion about commuting out of the county towards Marietta, and even leaving the state altogether. Now, what really cooks my grits is the fact that although my fiance and I can afford a home, my employees cannot. It is becoming increasingly difficult with the fees and the regulations being placed on homes and new buildings. That's putting it further out of reach. What about my employees who can't afford the half million dollar stucco box? I'm losing employees almost on a monthly basis. They're leaving me not to find higher jobs, they're leaving the state. Rent rivals mortgage payments. When you're dedicating over 50% of your income to rent, well, how in the heck can we save up for a mortgage payment, a down payment on a mortgage? You can't. You can't. If anything, the money that will be used will be saved for a college fund for their kids. Hopefully, the kids will make it. Forget about the dream of having a vehicle to build some wealth. So it brings me back to the proposal. Why would you seek to add cost to new households? Public art is a noble cause, it really is, but it is public. The entire public should pay for it, not just new residents. My name's Marcus Oliver. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Hutchinson, followed by Tyler Sandstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for your service to this great city. We're here today to talk about a public art fee. A public art fee, I'm really glad this agenda item came up after a tax discussion, because this public art fee is truly just a tax to developers that gets passed on to homeowners. So everybody sitting up here today, I assume you have either kids, or nieces, or nephews, grandkids that are millennials. As Marcus before me just said, 40 to 50% of the gross annual income of most of the people of our generation go towards housing. So what you're doing here today, if you pass that public art fee, is you're really adding a cost to the developer that'll get passed on to the younger generations. So whatever equity you think you have in your home, there won't be move-up buyers to do so, because the affordability problem keeps going ladder up, ladder up, ladder up. There is no middle rung. It's gone. And all you're doing now is bringing that lower level even higher. This is a public art fee. It should not be passed on to private developers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tyler Sandstrom, followed by Tom Fleming.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm 28 years old. My uncle and I actually run an infill development company. We've actually done a project here in the city of Vista. I'm here to talk to you today as somebody who this directly affects as both the consumer and the producer of these type of units. There's already so many regulations put into fees to do small developments, which is all we really have left in these areas, is are these small infill areas, including this new downtown development. Each one of those is a cost carrier to the final product cost. We have to factor these costs in when we perform a project, and all of that goes to the end consumer. And yes, 15 cents a square foot, that adds up. And that adds up to what is supposed to be entry-level product for people my age in an awesome new developed downtown Vista would want to live in. But we are going to be priced out when we keep adding these incremental units to what is considered a public art project. But truly, it's not. It is designated to the few residents who are going to be moving into these units. So they are going to be the ones burdening the cost for the entire city. And to me, that is something that is not fair, and is very difficult to overcome as both the developer and somebody who wants to buy in an area in North County, which is such a great city filled with passionate people who care so much. So I urge you guys tonight to not vote yes on this, vote no. And please help keep affordability for people in my age group. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Fleming, followed by John Fornu.
Hi, I'm Tom Fleming. I'm on the planning commission, and we heard all this stuff that was talked about and approved it. I like the idea that this is being done because it's a local downtown specific art area that it's talking about. We're not talking about a whole city, if you're going to build a house or anything. We're talking about in excess of 1,500 square feet, which the building that was built on my property, that when they did that, is about 1,500. So it would have to be bigger than that to even be qualified for it. If you took about the Paseo Point project, if you figured their fee, it comes out, if you amortize that over about a 10-year period, it adds about $10 a month to the apartment rents, when you figure what they have to pay based on the apartments, the number of apartments, and you amortize it over 10 years. So I don't see it as a big, as a large expense. I see it as an opportunity to do good, beautiful things in our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. John Fornu, followed by Melissa Stainer.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is John Fornu. I live in the foothill area of Vista, and I've been a longtime resident of Vista. And though I support, and many of us in the community do support a public art program, we've seen it all through the downtown area of Vista. It's beautiful. We love it. What I do disagree with, though, is making a small section of people pay for this project that's going to be of benefit to everybody. By definition, it's a public, it's a public program, and the community as a whole should decide on it and therefore fund such a program. I myself, I'm an IT administrator. I do work for Chelsea Investment Corporation. We are a builder of affordable housing. And, well, let me rephrase it. We're actually a builder of publicly subsidized housing. The cost of our housing has gotten so incredibly expensive as a result of mandates like this one proposed here. Every single dollar added to the cost of a project ultimately paid for by the end user. And these end users are people who are on fixed, low incomes. The speaker before me spoke of amortized value of about $10 a month. For some of these people, that's a lot of money. You know, for example, in the two new projects that were just previously, were just built in the area of Paseo Norte, and I can't recall the one there on the other corner, we're talking about $15,000 per project. And if this was already in place while these projects were built. Sorry. Not used to talking to a lot of people.
You're doing fine.
The proposal before you, it's really the wrong path if the city wants an art program. The public art is for everybody involved. Everybody should be willing and want to put a piece into this. It really shouldn't be burdened onto the people who are trying to make our city beautiful, much like the, you know, the big discussion we had earlier today of the Paseo Santa Fe. It's a beautiful project. Could have been more beautiful if we continued to add more and more fees for these people. Are these developers really going to want to come and make our community beautiful? And it's something we really have to think about. In my opinion, I don't think we should make any of our housing around here more expensive. I also have a family. I rent here. I cannot afford to buy. I can't fathom ever being able to buy here because of the cost of the housing here. The last thing that I would want to see, and the last thing my family would want to see, is that rate go up any higher. I've lived here my entire life. You know, I was born in Tri-City Hospital. You know, I ran through, up and down through the hills and off eucalyptus my entire life. You know, and I want to stay here. But as these, as these costs go up and continually to rise and rise every year, I have to start looking elsewhere. You know, and that's frustrating. That's frustrating. And with that, I just, I just hope that you'll think real hard about that and vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Stainer, followed by Tori Walker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. My name is Melissa Stainer, and I'm here tonight to represent the generation that's most impacted by our housing costs. We struggle to find housing that we can afford. For most of us, homeownership isn't even a consideration. I ask you the question, where is my generation supposed to buy here in San Diego? The North County Economic Development Council reports that 30% of workers in northern San Diego County live in southern Riverside County and commute to work every day. This is extremely hard on our environment. This is not helping us meet our greenhouse gas goals. This is just exacerbating the crazy traffic we have around here. It's bad for the businesses of Vista when all of the Vista employees don't spend their paychecks here. So to me, this isn't about, this isn't about art. This is about the cost of housing. This is, this proposal is just adding more costs. It's not about the amount of the cost, but it's the principle of your staff thinking that adding just a little more to the cost of housing is good public policy. It's a bad idea. It's not equitable for the young generation. And please do not support this fee.
Thank you. Tori Walker, followed by Mike McSweeney.
Mayor Ritter, Council members, thank you for your service. I'm somewhat torn. I love public art. I love what Vista has done with public art. But like the previous speaker, for me, it's not about the art, it's about affordability. I have three grown children. My son-in-law works with me here in Vista. He drives every single day from Temecula, and it gets very tiring on him. So for me, it's, like Grover Cleveland in 1887 vetoed the Texas farm bill. It was $10,000, that's all it was. But he said, "I need to stand on principle." And if it is an important issue, and he believed it was, he said, "I think you could raise a lot more than that with public support." And they did. They got about $100,000 to help the Texas farmers who were in a drought. I think that two agenda items ago, there was a lot of discussion on public art, the Paseo Santa Fe sign. There was a lot of passion. I think the Vista residents can get behind public art, and those are the ones that benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike McSweeney, followed by Jacob, is it Burns, sir?
I'm Michael McSweeney, senior public policy at Your Friendly Neighborhood BIA. Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no on the public arts fee proposal. I've shared with each of you the Point Loma Nazarene University study, which pointed out that on average, 40% of the costs of a new dwelling unit is directly related to the cost of compliance with regulations, impact fees, and the time it takes to get a project approved. While some of these costs are beyond your control, this proposal is totally within your control. The BIA is not against public art. We support public art. But the Point Loma study recommended a 3% reduction in processes, fees, or regulations to help make all housing more affordable while growing the economy and providing more employment. This proposal runs counter to those findings. But I'm especially troubled that you didn't have a true stakeholder meeting when discussing this proposal. You did have a citizens advisory committee meet, but you never invited the party who would pay for the program, the building industry, to participate. Allow me to illustrate the point in a different way. I know, attending council meetings, that a skate park is a big deal in Vista. So imagine if we had a citizen advisory committee, and the BIA was part of it, to plan a skate park, and it devised a funding scheme to do this by doing a surcharge on anything related to the arts, movie tickets, plays, moonlight theater, art museum ticket surcharge, and we left the arts community off the citizen advisory committee. That's what happened here. People targeted to pay were never invited to participate. It's blatantly unfair and unpatriotic. Typically, development projects pay a fee to mitigate for impacts of development. Traffic, parks, infrastructure is either built or paid for by the development that gets permission to build. Now, the proposal before you suggests that we use development to pay for something one group wants for the city, all the residents of the city, and another group gets to pay for the program. We feel it's unfair. The BIA has no problem when the city has a policy that would benefit all the citizens, as long as our members aren't targeted to pay for it alone. We don't oppose public art, as I said, but we oppose the practice of using development to pay for a societal need that development doesn't cause. If the city wants a public art program, you should have all your stakeholders represented and find an equitable way to pay for it. I've been here before you many times in the last few months, and I've spoken to each of you specifically regarding our industry's desire to lower all housing costs. This proposal flies in the face of those requests. Your chamber went from a position of support to neutral because they didn't want to see higher housing costs, and they were also surprised to learn the BIA didn't participate in the discussions. In 2015, in this county, how many homes, single-family detached homes were built at a price point under a half a million dollars? 229. There were 471 units built under a half a million dollars that were attached, less than, a little over 700 units in a county of 3.1 million people. There's a better, more equitable way to fulfill the wish to have public art in a downtown... There's a better, more equitable way to fulfill the wish to have public art in a downtown-specific plan. Please reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob Burne, is it Burnier? Burnier, am I saying it right? Okay. And he'll be followed by Adam Correio.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. My name's Jacob Burne. I'm a resident of San Diego in North County. Would love to become a permanent resident. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the public art tax and how it affects the overall cost of home building. As many people have spoken prior to me coming up here, a huge portion of what we pay for a home, for a new home in San Diego, is regulatory and fees through the city. And to apply more fees to developers is just hindering us to purchase homes at a decent rate. A number of cities have implemented public art programs through other financial and funding means. There's, you know, hotel taxes, meter taxes, working with local art organizations, working with private entities to fund projects. And I really don't think it's something that the individual developer and just a small part of the entire city should take on the burden of. I believe it's a public issue, and it should be addressed by everyone that lives within the city of Vista, not just this corridor that's affected by the public art. This public art will affect everyone that comes to that area and the entire community. And I think that the funding should be appropriate to the end-user, which is everyone in the community, not just a specific project. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Correio, followed by Sarah Spinks.
Madam Mayor and Council, good evening. I grew up in Vista, going, class of 2002, Vista High School. And now renting resident in North County as well. Still go to the, my dentist's right across the street there. I'm part of a generation, 32 years old, who's struggling with insanely high housing costs. And I understand, I'm trying to understand why this proposal is necessary and why paying rent for people that are trying to pay these insanely high housing costs. An entire generation is being disenfranchised and forced to spend close to 50% of their salary and just to pay for their housing costs. And the question is, are also businesses in this town supporting the proposal? Are they paying for it? Even through the proposal, it sounds like a minuscule amount of money. It's another cost to housing. I view this as a want and not a need, like infrastructure, as we were discussing earlier. This is the wrong policy, this is the wrong policy that only exacerbates the housing problem in our region, and I respectfully request that you do not support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Spinks.
Hello, again. I understand the argument on the side of the developers, and I understand that I've lived here my whole life, and I like all the art and the momentum, and I'm very passionate about it, obviously. We've actually had some developers come and approach the Public Art Commission in the past few months, and they've asked us how they can incorporate art into their design. And I feel like we have this momentum going, and we have these developers that are coming to the city now, and they're curious about how they can incorporate art into their developments. So I think that's awesome. We're attracting people who want to add to it. I don't really, it's hard to understand all the fees and all that. I know that my business is moving into the downtown, and we just paid a lot of fees. And we paid them because we know the investment is worth it. And I don't know, like, I just, I just look at, I was at a meeting earlier today with the school district about they have this art program that they're trying to get the district to bump up the arts to. And I feel like this is a whole community-wide effort. And I think that this is a way we can love where we live more by putting more art and having the stewardship and being excited about where we live and investing in our environment. And that, in world history, nobody's talking about what fees they paid on their house that they built. They're talking about the sculpture that was there, the painting or the art, like, these things are worth it. They're worth investing in. And if this isn't the solution, maybe we think of another way to get there and continue this momentum with art and Vista, because I think everyone is very excited about it. This is something that takes up many, many hours of my week now, and I let it. But, yeah, I think it's worth it. So, thank you.
My council's requested a small recess of maybe five to 10 minutes. It's been, been sitting here for a long time, and I see they're all, everybody wants to talk, but I think we're going to take a short recess. Five minutes, guys? Okay.
I'm going to call the meeting back to order, so can everybody take their seats please? Or stand up. Okay, we're through of all of our public speakers, so we're going to start with Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight to speak on this topic. I do think this is an important topic for us to talk about. I did want to say, I wanted to start off by saying that this was not staff-driven. The staff did not bring this up for us to have this discussion. This was brought up, I believe it was last year, when we were talking about a downtown-specific plan amendment, which was reviewed by a project advisory committee that had been made up of various community and business members. And it was that group that came up with this idea. So I just wanted to put out there, it wasn't from staff. And I do know of the one developer who reached out to talk about what can they do to incorporate art into their project. Because I've met with him, I've met with that developer many, many times. And I appreciate that they did that. And that shows personal responsibility and ingenuity and creativity. And I think that that's what it's about, being an American, is that you take responsibility for your steps and being creative and doing what you want with your project. I don't believe that it should be mandated that all developers do that. I applaud him for wanting to do that, but I don't think it should be mandated that all developers do that. We have a lot of public art in Vista. I love our public art in Vista, and we've become known. People come downtown just to walk the public art and see it, read about it, look at it, take pictures of it, and take pictures with it. I see a lot of Facebook posts of people posing, taking selfies with our public art. And we, as a city and as a people, we've been able to do that, all of this public art, without imposing fees on anybody. And I think we can continue to do that. Now, when I look at the developer fees that are requested here or talked about here, I see that as a camel's nose in the tent type of a situation. When I see that somebody has come up with a creative way to get somebody else to pay for something that they want. And what is going to be the next item that somebody wants in their community, and they're going to make the developers pay for that as well, if they want to build or have a presence in the community? Or they're going to find another target-rich audience that wants to do something in the community, and they're going to go after them and say, "But if you want to do this, you're going to have to pay us this money for this project." So I'm opposed to it on those principles as well. But as was spoken by almost every speaker here, as was stated, this isn't going to just be the developers paying for this. As we all know as consumers, all across the board, whether it's a residential development that is taxed, I call it a tax, that has to implement these fees, or if it's an infill like Mr. Fleming's old place is now a restaurant pad. If it's retail, residential, the money is just going to go passing through from the developer to the consumer and to the resident or the homebuyer. So that affects our residents here. And so for those reasons, I really cannot support, on any level, adding a new fee to our developers for art or anything else. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Franklin.
My first question to everybody would be, do we have great quality public art in Vista? And I think that unanimously, every member of the council would say, absolutely, we don't. So then I would ask the question, how have we been able to afford to pay for that public art? And why is the present source of funding insufficient to continue to finance the great quality of public art that I know that we would all agree that we have? So is this even a legitimate need in search of revenue? Or are we simply saying, we'd like to have more of a good thing, and we've thought of a way to pay for it? As I said about the transnet tax, there are a million things that we would like to do for our community, that each of us believes is the right thing to do, that it's necessary on some level, that it adds to our quality of life. But I like the old saying, ounces make pounds. And how do we get to a point where, after we pay sales tax, we are paying 60%, 70% of our income to one form of government or another? How we get there is by constantly taking another cut, raising another tax, and they're all small, they're all very small. It's only a half cent here, it's only 15 cents a square foot there. It's only, it's only, it's only. And all of a sudden, we're looking at paying 70%, 80%. And, you know, the argument about taking money home to pay for housing costs, I certainly agree with that. I don't care what you want to spend your money on, it's yours. It's your money. You earned it. You suffered and sacrificed, sweat and bled to earn it, it's your money. And we should only take it from you if we have some need that just absolutely cannot be fulfilled without the people coming together and compulsorily taking what belongs to you in order to satisfy some truly pressing societal need. And the reality is, we're doing a wonderful job, and to be commended for the job that we've done in emphasizing public art in our city. And I think that we're going to continue to be able to deliver public art. I, for one, think it's so important, and it does deserve a line item in our general fund. I would be willing to, and I think what was suggested was to go back to the drawing board and talk about, how do we, and by the way, I will make the first contribution right here tonight to a 501(c)(3) charitable organization designed to advance the interests of the public arts in the city of Vista. And I bet there's others in this room that would join me in contributing to that organization. Maybe there's already a good one. I don't know. Okay, well, come see me, I'll give you a check, okay? More than happy to support it. You know, no one's asked me, I give to a lot of municipal causes in the city. No one's asked me for a check for that. Happy to give you a check for it. You know, I bet a lot of other people are, if you ask. I would be even willing to call two or three other people, you know, and try and help you raise some more funds. You know, I bet a lot of developers, when they come to our city, I bet a lot of them might be willing to make a charitable contribution of some sort or another, if we were to just ask. But to make it mandatory, I think robs people of the self-determination to do it by themselves. And so this is not about whether public art is a good thing or a bad thing. I think all five of us agree it's a great thing to do. I think all five of us think that the public art program that we've pursued in our city heretofore has been successful and deserves to be continued. But whether or not we're going to add another rock to the knapsack of citizens, when will we begin to say no to more taxes? Will it be tomorrow, or next week, or next year? Or will it be after we're all long gone and dead, and our kids are still paying the price? When will be the day that we will wake up and say no to more taxes? Will there never come a day when it's too much? I think we need to, I think we need to go back to the drawing board, and we need to reach out to the public, and we need to meet the needs for public art, which is, I would even go so far as calling it a need of society. I'm not ready to call it necessarily a need that cannot be satisfied without government's involvement, because we know that that's not always the case. But I support the involvement that our city, and our city coffers have had in advancing the interest of the arts. And I would continue to think it should be prioritized, as it has been. But do we really need additional sources of funding? And is it so pressing that we have to say yes to yet another tax? I say no.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think it's definitely not the right thing to do, as far as putting this on the shoulder of developers. It is a public, it's for the entire public, so I think we need to figure out a way to fund it that way, and perhaps it is a line item that the entire city pays for, through tax, our existing revenues that we already have. So I'm not in favor of a new tax or fee to the developers. But I have an idea, so that we can go ahead and incentivize our developers. I've waffled back and forth on this, thinking about it, and I just decided I'm going to propose it. And I think, instead of penalizing developers, I think we should reward them for art. So for certain, and this is putting the burden on you, John, and your staff, but I think for certain projects of a certain size, I haven't determined that, I think it's better for you guys to determine that, and maybe this is where we get the BIA involved. We reward them for putting art in their project or providing art to the city by perhaps giving them a lesser requirement for parking spaces, or potential impact fees, or something like that. I think parking spaces is a good one, because that is something where the public has to give to. Because I know public is, or the parking is precious in our city. But if this is something for the entire city, then I think the public, the entire city, has to sacrifice for this, and a parking space is just that. It is a sacrifice for the entire city. So we're talking, you know, a $15,000 piece of art, we could say that's going to be the equivalent of two parking spaces, which I think we've already determined that parking spaces are worth about $18,000 from our parking study. So that would be a reward for that project. Of course, we'd have to tie this to the bigger projects that are on our downtown area. And perhaps we do that with, we don't just tie it to the downtown, maybe we do it for all the projects, but it would be more of an incentive, and I think developers are going to win from this. But most importantly, I think our public is going to win from this as well. I think it's a win-win situation when you're rewarding, rather than penalizing or charging fees. So that's something I would be interested in looking at a little bit further, as part of your recommendation or thoughts.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. So initially, I really liked this idea, and I think it's a good idea, but there's a couple of problems with it. And one is that it's such a small area, and it's such a small fee, that it's never going to generate a substantial amount of money unless we put it on projects like the Affordable Housing Project, which to me makes no sense, because we're taxing ourselves. We're taking money from the housing fund, putting a housing project, putting a fee on it, and then paying ourselves into the Public Arts Fund, which doesn't make a lot of sense. So if we take the bigger, the Paseo Point Project, the proposed second affordable housing project, out of the equation, we really limit ourselves to what potentially it can generate money from. And looking at the other cities of Escondido and Solana Beach that have these public arts fees, it's a citywide area, not a very small downtown area. So I think quite a few of the speakers were talking about having, if we're going to do it, make everyone who's benefiting from it pitch into it. That said, I think there's other ways currently that would spur additional public art much more quickly than a 15-cent fee on buildings that exceed a certain threshold. And that, I would like to say, I do like Councilman Aguilera's idea of incentivizing developers through the opportunity to reduce what I consider overly high parking standards for some of our projects. So maybe that's a way to lower those parking standards, to spur development, and increase the amount of public art. But I would like to see us use $50,000 to $100,000 of our year-end fund balance to put it into a designated fund to start a public arts fund for downtown public art. I think that's something that we have the financial wherewithal to be able to do currently, and start funding that annually, putting additional money into it as a budget item. But to start it off, putting a substantial amount of money to spur private contributions as well, I think we can do that going forward.
I agree, as long as we have the money in our year-end fund, I'm willing to do that. But I'm not really willing to think about parking yet, because I, you know, I know Deputy Mayor Rigby and I are like on parking, and it's like, I'm not willing to give parking spaces to anybody yet. So, anyway.
I think that's a discussion item for the future, perhaps.
Okay, so I have one speaker, Councilwoman Franklin, did you want to say something?
Just really quick. What I think we should do, if we can legally do it, is I think we should set an amount of money aside to be matched, and if we can put it into a good community organization, if that's legal, and we can say, if somebody in the community will give $100, then there's $100 of funding that will be met. I think it would be a phenomenal way to double the money and give folks a true incentive. When somebody comes to me and says, "There's a matching fund, and if you give us $100, it's worth $200," I see, that's awesome. I love that, and it really incentivizes giving. I think we could be very creative in helping the community in spurring the development of a robust private fund for the arts that is for the public art benefit.
Deputy Mayor Rigby, and then we'll have our speaker when you get through.
Okay, I just have a question. I don't know if anybody's asked this. Aside from the project advisory committee's recommendation, is there something broken in the way that we've been doing our public art? I'm thinking not, because we have a lot of it. We continue to produce public art throughout our city, not just in the downtown area. So I'm wondering, why are we trying to fix something that's already working well for us? Is there, is there a reason, aside from the recommendation?
I would say that the public art process is definitely not broken in Vista. It wasn't asked, but the city contributes about $30,000 a year out of the general fund, is what we spend annually for Kites Over Vista, for the commission, and for other things. Maybe Mr. Conley can chime in on the impetus for this, but I think it's really just to enhance and add more art and vibrancy to what we think is our downtown, and it's an arts and entertainment district. So by virtue of the name, we wanted to spur art in the downtown.
Right. But like you said, we already contribute $30,000 to that endeavor.
That's correct.
And we've been very successful with it. So I appreciate all of the discussion, but I'm not sure that I'm ready to run right out right now and create a solution for something that hasn't been identified as a problem.
Okay, and our speaker is Jayden Sterling-Randall. She is one of our top artists that does our Kites Over Vista downtown.
Hi, I'm Jayden Sterling-Randall, and I am an artist in Vista. My husband and I created Alley Art Man, the bike racks, Alley Cat, we do the kites. I'm also the acting president of the Vista Art Foundation, which is the nonprofit that you mentioned, so we would love to hit you up for some money. And just for everyone's knowledge, most of the art in Vista does not belong to the city of Vista. The kites are on lease, they do not belong to the city, and when the lease is expired, the kites go back to the artist, and then we try to move them on to another art exhibit. The ones that we have in the Shadow Ridge area, those are on consignment. They belong to the artist, they don't belong to the city of Vista, which we would love to sell them to the city of Vista, but at this point, they're just sitting in their own consignment. The other ones, like the murals in Alley Art Man and Alley Cat, came from grants from Bill Horn's office via the Alley Art Festival, which is our big fundraiser, well, it's not a fundraiser, but our big art project. So a little clarification on where the art came from, it actually, a lot of it doesn't belong to the city. So I know it looks like there's a lot of art there, that the city has this vast collection of art, but that's not really true. That's why we need money to fund art for the city of Vista. A few years ago, if you came to downtown, it was basically a ghost town. There was nothing down there. And now it's very busy, it's very booming, and there's lots of people down there. And a big reason that people come to the Vista now is because of the arts. We have art, you know, Main Street going on, they have lots of art activities, there's a public art that draws a lot of attention. Alley Art Man has a Facebook page, and I get daily posts of people coming and taking selfies and saying, "I love the art in Vista, it's so amazing." And so we need more, not less, and it needs to belong to the city and build up the art collection here in town. And the more art in town, the more people come to town, the more businesses look at the city and go, "Wow, this is a great town, let's bring our business to Vista," which brings our homes to Vista, which increases property values, and it's a big win-win-win. But we do need to figure out a way to fund the art program. If they don't want to do this, then we need to figure out some other way. Cody, you made a good plan about maybe some kind of art fund that we could get working out, and maybe the Vista Art Foundation could work somehow with the city council to get something like that going. We're having a hard time funding the Alley Art Festival, so we need to figure out some kind of plan to bring more art to Vista and have it become a part of permanent Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Campbell, are you still on there?
Just a follow-up, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
I do agree with the speaker that, you know, it's important, I think, moving forward, that the city have more of an active role in investing in those pieces of art. I think there's a couple of pieces that unfortunately moved out.
I know, it's so sad, I get attached to them, and then they're gone, and so, yeah, we need to be able to buy them.
So if we have a fund available to purchase select pieces, I think that would greatly benefit the quality of the long-term art that's placed downtown. Our system is not broken currently, but it leaves a lot to be desired. Compared to other cities that I've been to that have much more robust and engaging public art collections that are owned by the city, I think we have that opportunity here in Vista moving forward. We're kind of at that initial precipice of being able to grow the public arts program. And, you know, our financial situation in the city has gotten much better over the last few years, to where we could evaluate year-end fund balance money and, moving forward, a budget item, we're placing funds into an art fund, as well as partnering with private foundations, not just here in Vista, but throughout the county, that there are donors and philanthropic organizations that could help us secure those art pieces moving forward.
It would be nice to be able to buy a couple of them every year, or two or three permanently, that would remain here permanently, in my opinion, so. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
My question is may I?
Oh, okay, so what do we need on this? Where are we? Do you need a motion? Close a public hearing, I can do that. Okay, we need a motion on something, yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. I do not want to make a motion that we approve this, though, so.
I would second that. Motion to close the public hearing and take no further action at this time.
Right.
Okay. Is that, oh, I have speakers all over the place, okay. Councilwoman Rigby, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Campbell?
I was just going to say, if we could add that we bring it back for potential discussion on how we would potentially fund purchasing art pieces moving forward and develop a strategy and plan for that.
I'll allow that in my motion.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
Councilwoman Campbell covered it, thank you.
Okay, so please cast your votes. Wait, I think, did I vote it right? What's the motion?
Motion to close the public hearing, take no further action at this time, and to bring back, on a future agenda, staff recommendations on how to, as compared to you, fill the last part of that.
Options for funding a public art fund to acquire public art on behalf of the city in the future.
Without using developer fees, right?
Without new fees or taxes.
I think we're all getting tired. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on, moving on to our public hearing number two, Development Code Amendment related to marijuana land uses. It's a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the proposal to amend Chapters 18.02 and 18.06 of the Vista Development Code as they relate to marijuana land uses. So a public hearing is now open, and Director Conley will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Excuse me, in our ongoing effort to enforce our codes against marijuana-related businesses that have illegally established within the city, we've gone through a number of code amendments in order to provide clarification and enforcement authority that's needed in that continuing effort. The last time that we were before you was January of this year for some amendments. There are some minor additional amendments that are requested by the city attorney's office, which apply to the zoning code. Chapters 1802 and 1806 specifically requires a planning commission recommendation and council approval. They both went to the planning commission earlier this year, and were recommended for approval, and they're before you this evening. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay. I don't have any speakers on this item, and I don't have any council speakers on this item, so somebody make a motion.
I'll move.
Councilwoman Aguilera, please.
I'll move to approve the recommendation.
I'll second it.
And that includes closing the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll second that.
May I just ask one question to clarify of our city attorney? By being prescriptive in our limitation, we don't feel that any way that we're limiting ourselves. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I believe I do, and no, we're not limiting ourselves. These particular recommendations follow on discussions that we've had, issues that are raised by defense counsel in their ongoing effort to obfuscate. My client really didn't know, because he was only an ex, so we're just, as these issues are confronted in court, and the courts occasionally give them undue influence, we come back to.
So this will assist your office in pursuing?
Closing loopholes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes 3 to, one abstain and one no. Okay, moving on to the next public hearing, which is a Community Development Block Grant, 2016-17 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendments to the consolidated plan, and the 2015-16 Annual Action Plan and amendments to the Citizen Participation Plan. It's a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the 2016-17 CDVG Annual Action Plan, substantial amendments to the consolidated plan, and the 2015-16, did I just say all that? Annual Action Plan and the Amendments to the Citizen Participation Plan. I think I just said that twice. So, I know. Okay, so the public hearing is now open.
There are no speakers, would you like a presentation on this item?
No. Does anybody down there want a presentation? No. No, thank you. And so I'll close the public hearing and move to staff recommendation.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public, I have public speakers. First public speaker is Doug Holt.
...asked you today. My name is Doug Holt, and I live on east, up off East Vista Way and Warmlands, off Prince Way, and I've been here before on this subject. If you or me, I was here, lived here 11 years, moved down from up in Oregon, had many places to choose my place of where I was going to live. I was a general manager of TaylorMade Golf, and I wanted to have a home in an area that gave me a little bigger lot and a little more freedom, a little, you know, smaller community. But what I wasn't planning on is the blight and the things that's happened in my area up East Vista Way. Mayor Ritter is very well aware of an area there that just some family-density homes went into an area by the Shell Station up on Warmlands and East Vista Way, which has been a blighted corner for about eight years. And there's a little crack house behind it, and I paid a lot of money for my home, which is just around the corner. And all my friends at TaylorMade told me I was going to make a mistake on moving to Vista versus over in Carlsbad or Encinitas, and right now, at this point, I feel like I did. And I really feel bad about it, because I do have passion for Vista, and I love the community. I'm a member of Vista Valley Country Club, it's a great community, place to play golf. But when you try to drive home on East Vista Way at 5:00 at night, I take, takes me from Albertson's up there to get to my street, it takes me 25 minutes, and it's a blight, it's a mess. And they've opened the 76 now, which is adding to that problem. And when they finish the rest of the 76 to the 15, it's going to be a bigger problem. And as a member of Vista, and somebody who pays a lot of property tax, and taxes in general, I want to know what the city council... I want to know what the city council is going to propose to try to help people that travel East Vista Way up along to the north end of, almost where Vista ends. Because I don't think Gopher Canyon Road is still Vista, I'm not sure. But it is, it is past the Shell Station. I know that because I'm on East, on my Prince Way, I am a... And still in Vista. So, but getting there on that road and even the development that Ms. Ritter did on, had something to do with on the building of those new homes that are being sold there, no?
I just sold the property a long time ago, before that.
Okay, I apologize for that. But anyway, it's that Shell Station. I've probably had 18 emails in the last five years of having graffiti every single week. They come and paint it, and then next week it's the same.
I need you to wrap up because I think your time is up. I'm so sorry.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure. What is our plan for that area going forward?
Thank you, sir. Can I refer him to somebody? Or I don't know.
Yeah, in terms of the blight issues at the gas station, the home that was referred to, Tony Winnie, who's the assistant to the city manager, is in the back and can help address those questions.
Okay. Doug Holt?
No, that was...
Oh, there you go. Sorry. I'll call you again. Fred Smith.
So we're talking about money, and where's money's going to come from? I lived near Doug. I asked to speak on the subject of illegal signs. These signs are posted all over East Vista Way, particularly from the Feed Store to the city. This is a bar outlet, whatever it is, in Carlsbad that runs on Friday and Saturday nights. There are thousands of these signs around the county, and they are in, they're everywhere you can think of. I took 29 of these down on Friday and Saturday at the corner of Warmlands and East Vista Way. 29 of these. Somebody's paying to put these up. We have ordinances. Somebody can stop, put an end to this, notify the people that own this place. No more of these signs go up, but we start finding $100 apiece. $100 apiece is revenue to the city. So we're looking for a way to pay for some of this stuff. Here's a way to pay for it. But if you drive down, I challenge you to drive down South Santa Fe, going towards San Marcos, and see how many of these signs there are. And I realize it's not in our area, but if you get to South Santa Fe and Bo... I believe it's Bobolini where you make a right and go to the San Mar... Or the Walmart.
Yeah.
There are probably 80 or 90 of these. There's one tree that has eight or nine of these on it at any one time. And I talked to the code enforcement people, and they said, quite honestly, we just can't be everywhere. I understand that. I don't have a problem tearing these down. You know, I'm a pretty good size. Nobody's ever approached me and said they had an issue with it, except the people that live near these signs, they want them down. So I'm just asking you to look into this and do something about it because it's... This has nothing to do with Vista. It's not generating a dollar for us. And where these signs are going up is on East Vista Way where the people are entering the city. And if you look at the average daily trips northbound and southbound on East Vista Way between the freeway and there, it surpasses any street in this city. Melrose, I don't care, Sycamore, it's all the traffic's there. So they're coming into the city. You talk about your arch, this is what they're being greeted with. So thank you for your time.
Well, if it's in the city, then I think we should be taking them down, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Betty Foster.
Good evening. Mayor.
Yeah, pull it down. Pull the microphone down so we can hear you there.
Mayor.
Perfect.
Councilmembers, I'd like to speak about East Vista Way and Warmlands. Are you familiar with the area? Okay. Well, coming south, there is a turn lane. I live one block in on Prince Way. I've been here 22 years. And you're taking your life in your hands. The cars come whizzing down from the south on East Vista Way and by you on this side, and you're waiting to make the turn. There's a liquor store right here on the corner. And they're just... When they change this area and they put the left-turning lane in, they didn't allow enough space. So if there's large trucks and whatever that comes by, there just isn't enough there to be sitting there. So I move over as far as I can without getting into the lane next to me. So whenever I travel up, I have family in Murrieta, and I come down, and I have to come on East Vista Way to get home. I live one block in. So whether I travel Gopher Canyon Road or 15 to get to the 76 and so forth, I still have to come up to that light. And I'll tell you, I think it's just terrible. I think someone's going to get killed there. I certainly don't want to be the one. I don't want anybody to be the one. So I think you... If you, if all of you don't know where that is, it's just south of there is the Feed Store and the terrible Shell Station that's on the corner that was closed down. So it's... You have to take a look at that. If you ever get in that turn lane, you'll know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. James Foster.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor and Council. I'd like to also live on Prince Way. My name is James Foster, and I'd like to bring to your attention the fact that we were here four years ago, a lot of us, talking about these exact same things. And you know what's happened in four years? It's gotten worse, a lot worse. This past Saturday, there was an extremely loud party taking place just north of the intersection of Warmlands and East Vista Way. Extremely loud noise that went on till 11:30 at night. Not 10 o'clock, not 9 o'clock, 11:30 at night. I called the Sheriff's Department. They apparently responded. The music continued until 11:30 at night. It didn't go down. If anything, it went up. These, this party, these parties that they have at this location periodically are extremely large parties. Hundreds of people attend them, not five or 10 or 15 people. It's not someone's graduation or birthday. It's a well-organized party with disc jockeys, parking lot attendants directing people where to park. Yeah. Large, large commercial tents that go up on this vacant lots. I could go on and on and on about it. The code enforcement department has been notified of these, this type of activity many, many years. And thank goodness, this time, we finally got some response from the code department. Maybe there's a new bunch of people there. I sure hope so. They are trying to address this, but it really has to be brought to your folks' attention. We hear a lot of talk about signs that aren't... Don't please everybody down on Paseo Santa Fe. What about Vista Way? How many thousands of people come into Vista on that road every day? And what do they see? An abandoned Shell Station that is falling apart, rats running around the place, the crack house behind it, rats running all over the damn place. And it just goes on and on and on. Nothing seems to happen. I would request, invite each one of you to take a drive up Vista Way north. Go to that Warmlands intersection. Like someone said, there's someone going to get killed there. The road is, it's a lousy two-lane highway with three lanes in it. Please, try to help us. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. J.C. Win.
Thank you again. I just have one more thing that we didn't address on the Paseo Santa Fe is I talked with Councilman Campbell about this at the dedication for the veterans, but I think we need to lower the speed limit. I think 30 might be just a little too high.
Where?
On Paseo Santa Fe between Vista Way and Civic Center. I'd see 20 would work, but I don't know if we have to pass some special resolution to designate it as a slow pedestrian passageway or something, but I think 30 might be just a little too high. Because you put it at 30, and then they do 35, maybe 36, 37, 38, and 40, end up on top of the sign.
Yeah.
You know, it's a sad thing. I'm thinking about 20, but if it was up to me, it'd be 20. But thank you very much.
Thanks, J.C. Okay, with that, that ends our speakers. Oh, Councilmember Campbell?
I just wanted to address the one speaker that was talking about the party out at Warmlands. Actually, that's the second time that I have noted that particular part or parcel that had that party, and I've actually called the Sheriff's Department before on that. Actually, you know, here's the photo of that, that Saturday. So I'll work with staff to see what we can do to address that property owner to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to go to our remarks. And so I guess I'll... I guess I'll start with... Councilmember Aguilera. I know. I just got ready for bed, or maybe dinner first.
Well, I think, actually, I've made a lot of my comments because I did attend the Sandag meeting last week, and I can assure the public and my fellow council members that the, our fellow mayors and representatives of North County are definitely fighting for our dollars. And I assure you that those lock boxes and that are going to be in there because, you know, all the mayors get together, I think, every two weeks.
We did, actually, today.
Yeah, this is like the number one subject, and that's the number one talk. So we had a good, good meeting at Sandag. You know, this was pretty much the main subject. And like I said, the mayors were there. Hopefully, it appears that they were protecting North County. And, you know, we do, when we're up here in North County, we just don't get to realize what's south of us. There's a lot of those people there, too. And so it'll be interesting, and I know the public will make the right choice. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Just a brief remark. I'll be making a presentation at a future council meeting regarding the trip that I went on to Mexico City with the Regional Chamber, but as Councilman Aguilera alluded to about how many cities there are south in South County, I was the only representative of a city north of San Diego on that trip. And realizing the importance that multinational trade plays with many of the businesses here that are headquartered in Vista, very important trip, so I'll be making a presentation regarding some issues that I think that we can address as a city to help our businesses become more competitive in this economic environment. But an important statement to make out of that, which is almost unanimous across the board, from every business, small to large, and some of these companies are very large, multi-billion dollar multinational companies, that California is the place to be for business today. It's the most economically competitive place in the world. There's not one person out of those groups that said, "We want to move our company out of California." It's how do we bring more jobs to California, and how do we become more economically competitive? So that was a very encouraging statement for most of the businesses, almost all of them there. Represented the city at the EDC event last week as well. So a lot of great, positive economic signs throughout the county.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin.
More comments.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had a very, very busy schedule the last two weeks, but I'm just going to highlight one or two things. I actually had the honor to hand out awards at Vista High School last week for their Employee of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and Student of the Year. And in addition to the Student of the Year, each department had Student of the Year for their department. So I just wanted to congratulate all of the students and the teachers and the employees that won these awards, including Councilman Aguilera's son, Jacob. So congratulations to him.
Thank you.
And then also, I wanted to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department for the ride-along. It was very interesting last week. I appreciate it. I do one every year, and it's always good to go out, different days, different times, to see what's going on in our community and what we can do to help our law enforcement. And also, I want to say what a fabulous time it is to be a Vistaan. I'm so proud with the unveiling this week of the Veterans Memorial Park here over on in Paseo Santa Fe. If you haven't had a chance to visit it, it's beautiful. As the wife of a Vietnam veteran who was in Vietnam at the same time as Ernie Pinamonte, I've, my husband and I have visited it when it's been quiet, just the two of us. And it's a very moving, very touching tribute to not just the man and his family, but to our community and to our city. And I cannot even express how proud I am that we have that park here in our city. So thank you to everyone who participated and made that possible, the Pinamonte family, to staff, to all of the other partnerships that were included in developing that park. So very, very good job to everybody. So, thank you.
And that park was actually, it was dedicated this past Sunday, and if you have, people that haven't seen it need to take a walk. It's for a pretty beautiful place and for quiet relaxation and to remember our veterans. And so it's located right along the Paseo Santa Fe corridor, and it's across the street from Pepper Tree Frosty, which we all know that place. There's going to be a ceremonial groundbreaking for Vista's two new skate parks, which is set for Tuesday, May 3, at 2:00 p.m. Is that next Tuesday? Is May coming already? May next week? Okay, so it's next Tuesday, May 3, at 2:00 p.m. Groundbreaking takes place at 400 North Santa Fe. It's on the corner of North Santa Fe and Orange Avenue. And so information on that skate park construction is available online at cityofvista.com. And that's an exciting thing. We've been waiting for those skate parks, to find locations and to get those done for quite a long time. Don't miss the Intergalactic Nemesis Live Auction Graphic... Am I saying all this right?
Action. Action.
Action, not auction. Okay. Okay, I'll try again. Intergalactic Nemesis Live Action Graphic Novels Target Earth at the Moonlight Amphitheatre on Saturday, May 7. Tickets are available at moonlightstage.com. And then one more reminder that the primary election is coming up on June 7, and so you have to be registered to vote by May 24th. So you just have this next month to get registered. And so you can check your registration on San Diego County Register's website at sdvote.com. So did you have the little thing there? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick notes. So one is there's a facade improvement program workshop that will be held on Wednesday, May 4, at 9:00 a.m. in the Morris B. Vance Community Room. The workshop's free to businesses. This is giving them information on the city's program to be able to apply for facade improvement monies. And then the other item is our city fire department is reminding residents that because of the wet winter, the tall grasses, that we need to be prepared. There's thicker-than-usual wildfire threats out there, so make sure that you trim your weeds, trim all the grasses around homes and properties to make sure that we're safe and have defensible spaces.
Thank you. And before I adjourn, I just wanted to... Anything down here? Attorney or anybody down here? No? Okay. I just wanted to just, I have a friend that recently passed away, and her name was Cindy Erie, and she was actually once Business Person of the Year for E-World Recyclers. And so she was very young, struggled with breast cancer for two years, and just passed away last week. And so I just would like to adjourn in her honor tonight.
I'm sorry, I do just have one comment. Two representatives from the CDVG to, that we were funding, were here earlier, and they just asked me to make a few remarks. They just wanted to thank you guys for your service and the recommendations from Angels Depot and Palomar Family Services. And Angels Depot would also like to invite you all to their 10-year anniversary on Tuesday, May 31, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And it's at their new warehouse on La Mirada Drive. They do have packages here for all of you with all the details as well.
Okay, thank you. And we are adjourned at 9:03. Holy cow.